Good evening. It's 7:00. We'll get started. The first thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So let's take attendance.
So noted.
Okay, I'll need a motion to approve the minutes of the September 10th meeting.
So moved.
So I have motion and support. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes and the minutes are approved. Welcome to the Bloomfield Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of October the 8th, 2024. As a brief introduction, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body that is appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the Zoning Board of Appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the Zoning Board of Appeals is subject to Circuit Court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium. Address your comments to the board and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief. Comments by the Neighborhood Association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but those comments are not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please combine comments to the specific request before the board. For a request to be successful, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. We hope this provides a better understanding of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. Thank you. We'll now call the first case, which is item 1T4600, Charing Cross. Is the applicant ready? Please come to the podium, give us your name and address.
My name is Mike Kupas. My address is 4600 Charing Cross Road, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan.
So could you tell us why you need a variance?
Yes. First of all, thank you for hearing me out. I'm respectfully requesting a variance. The main purpose is we have some existing structures and we built these, this gate because of the main purpose of the safety of my children. I live on a main road, Charing Cross is a main road, and my property backs up to Waddles Road, which is another main road. Both of those roads don't have any sidewalks. So when we decided to put these gates in, it was mainly because my kids are going to be playing in the front. They were four and five when we started. They're now seven and eight years old, but the front yard is where they play. When we bought the house and we were renovating it, there was a couple disturbing things that happened. There were people that were pulling up our driveway, obviously just watching what we were doing because we were renovating for about two years. And my driveway is very wide. The scale of the house is very large. The driveway is very wide, so I knew it was going to be a pretty big project to put these gates in. The gates are 16-foot wide. Each side is 16-foot, but if you measure from the actual pier, it's 17-foot. So I knew that structurally we were going to have to build something significant, but the biggest challenge we had was not the actual size of the gate, it was the tomography of the property. See, that's a good picture. See that gate that's open right there? If you were to measure from the front of my house to the end of that gate right there, I have over a 10-foot drop. So the property slope is really significant. So one of the reasons we wanted to...
So I think what everybody on the board has on their mind is a question is you came before us and we approved certain dimensions and what was built is not what we approved. So could you explain that?
Yes, that's correct. So the original design, now, mind you, I've never been in front of the board before and I...
Okay, I'm trying to make it easy on you, but you've got a tough question to answer there.
Yeah.
So we approved something and you didn't build what we approved.
I was unaware of the approval process completely. I had a builder that was handling everything. I was unaware of it. When I was looking at what they were doing, you know, I obviously voiced my opinion and I just didn't look right what they were doing. Now, I understand it was approved now, but back then I didn't understand. So I was just asking questions. I go, I have all this existing retainer walls, all stone. I go, doesn't it make sense that it's supposed to just be even? That's the way I looked at it. It's supposed to be even. Plus, I thought the gate just looked too low, the way they had it structured. So I just asked, I go, can it be built up at least so it's aesthetically pleasing? It looks normal because of the scale of the house? And they looked at me and disagreed. Yeah, yeah, we can do it. We can do it. So I never thought twice that it wasn't something that could get approved. They built it and it wasn't till it got denied, then I realized, wow, we have an issue here. So I know it got tabled a couple times, at least once or twice, but I realized I needed to just come in here and ask for the variance myself. I take full responsibility because it was me that said, can we make these adjustments and changes? But I just didn't have any experience. I know that ignorance is not an excuse for anything, but I was ignorant to this whole process and that's really why I'm here today.
Are there any other questions from the board?
We're just in a difficult situation because if you came to us the first time with what you're requesting, it's highly unlikely it would be approved. So, you know, it's a real struggle for us.
Understandable.
And do you remember who attended the meeting?
I had nothing to do with any of that, yeah. I'm assuming it was either the people that built the gate or my builder. I wasn't, I'm not really sure who attended.
Okay.
I mean, I assume you had to sign the application.
Probably. We had so much going on there, I don't really remember doing any of that, but I probably had to.
And so after the meeting, there wasn't any discussion with you about what was approved or, you know, what they got? They were just...
Probably there was a discussion. I just, I just don't remember it because there was so much going on. You know, the gates, that was just something I wanted to do because of the safety of my kids.
Okay.
That was the main reason and it was a big job to do that. And, you know, we were faced with some challenges there and I was just voicing my opinion. I just didn't realize the process.
Right. You didn't realize maybe the impact of your request?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? All right, I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this?
My name is Joseph Ripollone. I reside at 711 Hickory Heights. We actually live three blocks from the gentleman in question. That road is a very high-traffic road and I use it every single day to get to my house. I drive and pass that home. I have to say that, in my opinion, and especially my wife and son, we feel like the home is an improvement and the gates look pretty and we don't feel that it's intruding on the neighbors or the aesthetic of the neighborhood. My house, my subdivision, actually less than a half-mile from his home, so we are very close to it. The house is very big in scale, so I understand, you know, the need for bigger gates and to protect his family and children, especially from playing in the driveway, especially since it is sloped downhill. Any bicycles or anything could go down there. So I just want to express my support for what he's done. Again, I pass his house every single day and it's a beautiful home. My only complaint is that there aren't sidewalks so that we can't go trick-or-treating there because that's my only complaint. So that's all I'd like to say again.
That's a seasonal complaint.
Correct, yes. So I have a two-year-old son and we would love to go trick-or-treating there. Maybe Mike can make that happen, but it's a beautiful home and it fits in very well with the community and it blends in with the other houses around it because naturally at Charing Cross, there's a lot of large homes there and a lot of these homes do have big gates. So that's just all I'd like to say about that.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. I don't know that you need to respond to any discussion on the board now before we, how people feel about this, right? This is not... Easy? Difficult or balancing?
Well, it's a challenge because, you know, once we approve something and then... And the concerns about the safety and everything could have been handled with the variance that had been granted.
Right.
Correct. Because that was presented with the application initially and that's why it was granted. So...
What was the height of the variance granted?
Four-foot fence.
Four-foot.
On the screen. Oh, there it is. Four-foot gate, five-foot high pier. So he's five and a half and six.
Yeah, it's a difficult decision, you know. Again, if you were coming here before us today, we would say, why do we need more than the four-foot that the ordinance provides for? The four feet wood, you know, with younger children, provide the same level of security, you know, for people coming in, going out and it's...
Could I respond to that point?
No, we're discussing...
Fair enough. All right.
Yeah, I feel like a four-foot fence would provide the same level of security and this is, you know, it's pretty large. It's like commercial in scale to me.
So someone like to make a motion? Or you could at least discuss a motion so we sort of have a... I guess I would have, I would have a problem approving it. I'd just say that. Just because of the magnitude of the change that he made, whether it was, you know, knowing or unknowing. It's not something we would normally approve. What?
All right. With respect to the property located at 4600 Charing Cross Drive, I would move to deny the request for the dimensional variance because the applicant has not demonstrated compliance with, or has not demonstrated practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would not be burdensome and in fact, the ZBA previously granted a variance to address the concerns that you raised tonight and you exceeded that variance. There would be injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that we do not typically grant requests like this of this height and magnitude. And so it would be unfair to others that we've applied, you know, the same ordinance standards to. There's nothing unique about the property and this was self-created. That having been said, you will be required to remove the gate and piers within 30 days after approval of the minutes.
Support?
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All who's in favor of the motion to deny the request, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Fortunately, unfortunately, your request is denied.
And I guess I would say, we did grant a variance before, so feel free to come back, you know, and re-request that variance.
Okay. The original one?
They do, it still stands.
Yeah, I was gonna say, couldn't he still do that?
It was 21, isn't it expired?
Yeah, that's true. It was 21.
It was 21. So they could come back and request that. It would, it would.
Yeah, but they could, yeah, he could re-request it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item 2T711 Hickory Heights. Is the applicant ready?
Tyler Phillips, I'm counsel for the Ripollones. My business address is 3400 Renaissance Center, Suite 400, Detroit, Michigan. In addition to the stuff digitally presented, I apologize, I'm one copy short, but we have some additional letters, some support, some more recent pictures of the property, which show the property in some of the more recent condition with additionally new planted trees in the front yard, some sod that's in. So it's much more recent pictures of the property. I've got six.
Okay.
I apologize for having to make someone share, but...
Now, we need a half-hour break to read this, you know.
I assure you, it's pretty expedient to get through, but there's three issues. I'll wait till we've gone through these, but Phillips, what two else?
Can you hear me now?
Better?
We'll do that.
These are still warm.
They're in the heat, on the heated seat in the car, so there you go. So there's three issues here before the board and unfortunately, much like the first applicant today, my client had a builder who didn't inform him of the, yes, I'll be, yes, there's, we'll get into some of that stuff, but my client was dealing with a builder who didn't inform him of the need to seek certain variances or permitting prior to constructing the improvements in the backyard. That is what it is. They would have gone back. I'm sure he would have done that had he been informed. People rely on their builders. Not every builder informs their client like they should. Fact of the matter is, we've got three issues before the board. The first is a hot tub. Second is a natural feature setback and the third is a TV mount. With respect to the hot tub right now, that, as you'll see in the pictures, that hot tub probably sits six inches above grade if you look at the stone wall and there's plants, if you see to the front around it. Basically, that is about as close to being at or below grade as you can get without being at or below grade. That screening provides privacy from the neighboring properties. We believe that the sunken nature of that hot tub makes it not a nuisance to the neighboring areas. With respect to the natural feature setback, what was removed was poison ivy, poison oak. Ripollones have a young child who's here today. They wanted to make sure that that yard was safe to play in. Did not realize there was a natural feature setback. The builder set forth a plan that they're going to spread Michigan wildflower seed in that natural feature setback so it'll all be native, it'll all be beautiful, it'll all bloom at certain points of the year. So it's actually going to be better than it was before, where it was just poison ivy, poison oak. With respect to the TV mount, the TV mount in question does, I believe, sit between five and six feet above grade. As you can see there, it is shielded by the arborvitae. At the two neighboring boundaries, there's been evergreen planted. There's also some pictures in that packet that I showed you, which will show a little bit better some of the views from the neighboring properties and how it is essentially screened from there. With respect to HOA approval, with at least respect to the TV mount and the hot tub, there was initial approval of the HOA. That's in the, not in this packet, but what was previously provided. I'm referring to an email, May 202024, quote, "Thanks for sending, Joe. All good on the mount," when we're referencing the hot tub and the TV mount. So initially, there was HOA approval. There's been comments and letters sent after that saying, well, now the HOA doesn't want to approve it, but they proceeded moving forward based on the understanding that the HOA had approval. It's my further understanding and speaking to my client that since then, the HOA president's been out there, looked at the property, inspected it, and approved the same. So for all those reasons, we believe that this property, which had not really been maintained for years until the Ripollones bought it, and in the past two years, they've done extensive renovation, we believe it adds value to the neighborhood as-built and that it fits the criteria for a variance.
Do we have any questions from the board? Because we've got quite a few letters on this, which I read. Is it possible to see, when the TV's on, is it possible to see the TV from other homes or the street?
You know, from the street, absolutely not. It's in the backyard, so it's not being seen from the street. You might be able to see some of it, but there is evergreen that's been planted that within a year or two, it's going to completely block that. That evergreen's going to grow in. There's been, let me see if I can find the portion of the PowerPoint here.
And I'm assuming the TVs watched at night?
Well, within existing, you know, noise and ordinance and laws, thank you. Yeah, actually, we're past these. Thank you, Tina. So that's an example of some of the planning that's been done, which would show a view from the neighboring property.
I'll put on the docuCam if you can.
Thank you.
Yeah. Just, I'm just gonna move this over, sorry.
Yep. Thank you. So that shows some of the trees that are planted that are going to shield on that back rot there. Of course, we've got a nice glare.
Yeah. Really hard to see.
Maybe it's my shadow or your shadow, so if we step away, maybe it'll focus in.
It's from the... It's picking the cameras.
It's the high gloss of the photo, I think. There we go. There you go. So you can see those trees have been planted along the boundary there.
Well, but it, yeah, it doesn't obscure the view, right? It has to obscure the view immediately. So I would say that's, got a lot of gaps in it. But I was, I was asking you questions about when the TV's on at night. How about...
Joe, can I just respond real quick before you go? So there's existing noise ordinances. I believe that there's, the ordinance right now says after 10:00, but I could be mistaken on that, so don't quote me, although I don't think anyone is. But it wouldn't be on past any existing, you know, any existing ordinance or nuisance or whatever ordinances may be. In fact, it's not on past those times. So, Joe, if you want to, go ahead.
Yeah, we probably use the TV maybe, maybe seven times. We've never been out past 7:00 or 8:00. Quite frankly, I have it on for the Lions games. If you'll notice in the packet that he put along, there's other people who live in the Hickory Heights subdivision who have watch parties in their backyards. We watch Lions games. There's other outdoor TVs in the area. In fact, we have evidence of that in the packet he provided. They have it in the Facebook group when certain people in the community, hey, come on over, let's watch Lions. Yeah, so mostly it's for like big events, Lions games, stuff like that. We go to bed maybe 8:00, 9:00. I have a two-year-old. We're not out there all night partying. With that said though, there are laws in place that you can't have noise levels past a certain time. We've never had any complaints or any calls to the police, no complaints, nothing like that. And again, we've only used the TV like maybe five or six times. So it's not like we're out there every single day with the TV on. It's more just when we're out there, we have something to do. I do work a lot and I have a two-year-old. We're planning our family right now. We have more kids coming and some medical stuff coming up, so we don't really have time to sit back there and watch TV all day. So any questions about us using the TV and how often we do it? I haven't had the TV on in the last maybe two to three weeks. I haven't even turned it on, other than the Lions game. And again, other people in the area have outdoor TVs as well and we have that proof in the Facebook group. People put, hey, come on over, we'll watch the Lions game outside.
Okay, well, we will open this to public comment, so we'll see if anyone has any concerns about that.
Can I say something?
Yep, go ahead.
This is just a general comment. We have a number of items before us tonight where people, they're already existing. They put them in without coming for approval first. I want everybody to understand that there's certain standards that you need to meet to be entitled to a variance. Can you hear me? To make sure it's on.
It's on. You just gotta talk a little louder.
Me not talking loud enough?
Yeah.
There's certain standards that you have to meet to be entitled to a variance. It's not a question of, you know, other people have it, it looks nice, things like that. So it would be really helpful to all of us, when you come up here, if you focus on addressing those standards. Okay? So saying that, if you, would you like to comment specifically on how you meet the standards to get a variance?
And why are you pulling that up? How tall is that TV wall? Do you know?
Eight feet.
Six feet.
I thought it was eight feet.
I don't believe it's eight. Is it six?
I have the documents applied to Andrea, so whatever I apply.
So it's eight?
Is it eight?
Eight feet? Okay.
Shit.
We did put arbs in the back of it because I knew that was an issue, so...
And we're also having to have more arborvitae, but that's needed as well.
So here's the thing, I think, why don't we open it to public comment? Because you'll have a chance to respond. I'm guessing that you're going to have a list of things to address based on what I saw in our packet. So I'm going to open this for public comment. Is there, how many people would like to speak on this item? Could you raise your hands? It looks like we just had, we just had...
Two.
Two? Just two? All right, so sir in the USA jacket, if you could give us your name and address?
I'm new at doing this, so please tell me if I screw up. My name is Kevin Gallatin.
Okay.
3954 West Orchard Hill Drive. I live in the community. We walk by there all the time. First of all, if we're waiting two or three years for the trees to grow, that neighbor, the neighbors around him have to wait two or three years before they get that peace and quiet that's going on with the TV and everything, so please keep that in mind. Yes, they're small, but we have to wait until it grows. There have been numerous things that they did without notification. There's a gravel driveway that they added and it went all the way to the river. They have since backed it up, but there's still the gravel there.
So we're not talking about the gravel driveway?
I know, I'm just, these are all the issues that they have. I can shut them...
But we're trying to have facts that help us decide whether the applicant gets the variance, so...
So if you're dealing with the TV, he's got, I mean, not a lot of people have the TVs and the trees should be bigger so that the people aren't offended, especially the neighbors right next door.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to speak on this item?
Hi, my name is Stephen Aboud. I live at 701 Hickory Heights Drive, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan, 48304. I'm the direct neighbor to this particular property. You want the facts.
Correct, yes, we're here, we're here for facts.
The plans were never submitted before it was built. It was never approved before it was built. He doesn't even know the size of it. The last ZBA form said eight feet tall, nine feet tall. This one says eight feet tall. I subject to you that it's a lot taller than that. The other thing is that it, he says he only uses it seven, eight times a year and yes, other people have TV events in their backyard, but they use temporary screens or the screen is up against the house, so I, so I don't have to look at it 24/7/364. And that's what's happened right now. I see that thing every day out of my office, in my backyard, and it's just, it bothers me because he knew he wasn't supposed to build it. The Facebook page that he so lovingly likes to, sorry, in that he said, I want to change the rules and I think that they're silly. Great, he can't change the rules. The deed restrictions are the deed restrictions, no accessory structures. He could have put that up against the house and I wouldn't have had a problem with it, but he didn't. He stuck it out in the middle of the yard and it's there on display 24/7, 364 days a year. It wasn't approved. Nobody ever saw a drawing of it before. That email that the, that he wants to say approved it, said it was only six feet. It was six feet wide, but it's, it's the tallness that makes it unforgivable. I can't stand looking at it. And the trees that they want to tell you that he planted, they were planted by the other neighbor. They weren't planted by him. We all got upset and he, we've been looking at this thing for two years as he's tried to fix the property and some of it looks better. Most of it, I wouldn't have done, but that's me, okay? I get that. I don't like that TV screen. I don't think you should approve it. The deed restrictions are very clear about accessory structures. It's not attached to the house. It should have been attached to the house. He could have put it up against the house with an arm and sat in his, in his hot tub and, and it would have been fine, but he didn't. He had these two poles that were supposed to be for the sauna and he couldn't use them for a sauna because he got rejected. Said no sauna, no auxiliary structure, and yet he built a TV accessory structure. I have a problem with that. I live next door. I see it. The other neighbors, they got shielded by the things that he put on the other side because he couldn't put trees in front of the TV. So despite my...
I think we get the picture. I think you've got, you've got a sense of it. So thank you for your...
Please reject it.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Okay. You could give us your name and address.
I'm Cindy Bauer. I live at 721 Hickory Heights, so I'm on the opposite side. And I've lived at this subdivision 20 years now and for most of the time that I was living there, that property really was not well-maintained. It was not at all. It was pretty much, basically, the man did not live there. I spent a lot of time keeping that creek clean, one of the things that we're talking about.[1701.01] There are invasives, there's poison ivy, there's watercress, there's buckthorn. There's a lot of that. So they have cleaned all that up. And if you look at the pictures, it actually looks very, very nice. And I know the neighbors, they are not loud, you know. I think what they've done with the backyard, they've made a lot of great improvements. They, there's no more noise than what I hear at other neighborhoods, houses. Sometimes I actually hear more noise because of the children that play in the pools, things like that. So again, I find that the Ripblones, they do go to bed at night early. They're not up early in the morning, creating noise and having problems. So personally, I'm fine with it, you know? And again, like I said, I look at the ARBs. I do see them out enjoying their yard, but again, it's what we do in our neighborhoods, in our own homes. We enjoy our yards, our homes, and we should be able to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item that has not already spoken?
I would just like to say something.
So if you're the applicant, you're gonna have time to respond. So I just want to make sure there's no one else who's a neighbor, who hasn't already spoken, that would like to say anything. All right, I will close the public hearing. And now the applicant is free to come up and respond to the comments at the public hearing.
Yeah, I just want to respond to one of the comments from the neighbor. He said that we didn't plant any trees. We actually have five pictures here of the ARBs that are blocking his window. So I'm not sure why he's saying that. And the air conditioner that he was very concerned about also. We put ARBs around, we spent a lot of extra money trying to appease and make everybody happy. So I don't know why he's saying that. It's actually not true. And these are proof right here, so.
Is that picture any different than what we saw before?
These are trees that we paid for and planted, not the neighbors. We planted them.
I forgot, Dr. K.
So counsel, did you...
Just very briefly, because there was a question that I left unanswered by the panel regarding the criteria for the variance. And there's multiple factors here, but I think what the two that I would focus on, the variance here is not gonna alter the essential character of the area, right? People use their property in this way. This, in fact, adds value. I don't think it, it turns it from something that looks residential to commercial or something of that nature. And I think that is the biggest factor I would point to. And I think this just speaks to someone using their backyard in an appropriate manner. And to that, that speaks to the property being used reasonably according to the zoning. Being able to use their backyard in an appropriate manner with a reasonable TV place there. Other people do this the same way. I do think it meets the standards for a variance. Thank you.
All right, then, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion, motion.
I have a question. Nothing's in the natural features setback, correct?
The request is to restore, in, they already did some work within the NFS.
Okay.
The request before you now is for them to allow them to go back in the NFS and restore it with native vegetation. That's the proposal.
Okay. But that's not where this TV is.
Yeah, that's, it's the way this reads that's confusing. So there is a separate request to be able to restore the natural features area?
Correct.
And that's where the variance is, right? Because the other one...
The other one is just a permission request.
It's just a permission.
Does the township, do we have approved plantings for natural features areas? And is that what they're planning to do?
The plan that was permitted is to use a native wildflower mix. So it's, it's all native species. It's gonna be all native wildflowers. So like I said, it's gonna be something that blooms by the creek. It'll look beautiful.
Thank you.
My understanding, there's a list of approved...
That's what I thought. Okay. So it'll be from within the list of the township approved?
It'll be on the list.
Wildflowers. Well, I have one comment. A lot of times when we're looking at approving accessory structures, we look for compatibility with the main building. And I mean, I have issues with whether the screening is dense enough around the TV that's there, a little bit on the height. I mean, our ordinance does state the screening needs to be to the height of the structure at the time of installation. I also just have a, you know, an aesthetic or architectural comment that the materials on this TV item are, I mean, that's kind of what is so visually intrusive. I'm just wondering if it, that could be darker materials or more compatible with the architecture. It's really a bright, light siding. Whether a darker color and appropriate screening is part of the visual intrusion, is that the bright wood.
What, I'm sorry, what did you say?
It could probably be shortened a little bit as well.
Mm-hmm.
I think.
You mean the height of it?
Yeah, brought, reduced.
It's really tall.
Reduced the side of, yeah.
Like TVs are generally wider than tall. Don't understand why this monument is taller than wide for the proportion of a TV.
Any other comments or suggested motions for this?
It's taller than eight feet.
Yeah, it does.
It looks taller than eight feet to me, but maybe that's me.
Well, while you're all thinking about the permission request, I'd like to make a motion on the variance.
Okay.
Okay? With respect to the property at 711 Hickory Heights Drive, I would move to grant the request for a dimensional variance in order to restore the natural features setback. And this is a unique situation that doesn't necessarily follow the standards of the ordinance because this is something that was removed, should not have been removed, and it's the goal of our ordinance to restore. That's to its state. And so therefore, I would say that we should approve this and that that should be done and the area restored within 30 days of approval of the minutes. Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That request is granted. So now we still got the hot tub, television wall, and gas fire pit, so...
The gas fire pit is on the patio, so that's not, do not include that.
Okay. So we have the hot tub and the television wall to deal with.
Those are just permission, the variance is correct.
Mm-hmm. It's correct.
Well, were this a fence? We wouldn't be approving a nine-foot-high fence. It looks like a fence. I favor knocking it down to four feet or five feet, like a fence. Or I would only support that. So would I make a motion?
Yeah, sure.
Well, hold on a second. Counsel, could you come up? Maybe your, maybe have your client come up here?
Yes.
So I think you can kind of see from the feedback here, the height is a significant issue.
And the screening.
And the screening. So you're gonna have to have more screening. And would you be amenable to, you know, a lower height? Does that meet your needs or does that not help you at all?
If you're asking me what I would like to do, if it's okay with counsel and if everybody would be happy, is we would be happy to add more screening to satisfy not only the council but the neighbors as well. We want to live in a community where everybody is happy. Even the gentleman who spoke here, who's not happy with us, we wanna, we wanna, we want to keep him happy as well. So we're happy to add more screening. My contractor did submit a plan and this wasn't in it. It was added after the fact. And if I had known, I could have made some adjustments to it, but at this point, he did build it. And so what I'm asking is if we're able to add more screening to compensate instead of cutting it down a couple more feet to maybe help out with that approval. So that's the only thing I can ask for.
Okay. You can both be...
I'd say I've got nothing.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we kind of have his...
I'm just showing you the elevation that was provided for the height, which does say eight feet.
That's a...
Looks like it's just on two pillars that you could just knock those pillars off and drop it. Or you could cut the top.
So the understanding is, if we have more screening, that means immediately or near to immediately, the applicant would have to find 10-foot or whatever it is, ARB vities, and put them in the ground, you know, within the next 30 days so that nobody sees the structure. I mean, basically, that's what we're saying.
Well, and there was a picture in the packet of the view from the one neighbor.
Yeah.
And you can see it from the side. So you basically have to screen the...
You're gonna have to build a wall.
All the way around it.
And it's gotta be up now.
And I think it could be lower. It could be cut down lower than that. That seems to be extended too high, in my, in my opinion.
Okay, so I, I agree with both those things. So need more screening. And I'd support a lower height. I mean, I appreciate what the applicant said, but I, that is...
Once again, if they had been here asking for permission initially...
Yes. The impact of it is pretty significant. So, does anybody make a motion?
Yep, so this is item...
Two.
Okay, so relative to the permission request, in regard to the appeal at, looking for the address.
711 Hickory Heights.
711 Hickory Heights. For the accessory structure, I move that the request be denied as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did not demonstrate compliance with Section 42-76 standards due to the fact that the structure was, is not compliant with any township, existing township standards, and no request was made whatsoever. Furthermore, I just state for the record that ignorance of the law is not an excuse. Therefore, if approved, the accessory structure would need to be removed within the next 30 days.
Support.
And I just want to clarify. We're only talking about the TV.
Yeah, you didn't say this. We're only talking about the TV mount. Because there's, yeah, okay.
There will be a separate motion on the hot tub.
Okay.
So the motion is referring only to the...
TV.
Television wall feature.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Support.
So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? I mean, I would just say, I would be okay with a shorter, you know, a lesser height for it. I mean, people do have two TVs in it, but I suppose, you know, he could come back for that rather than, we could see it.
Yes, exactly.
Any other discussion?
Reapply.
And it will still need to be fully screened for the height of the proposed.
Yes.
So all those in favor of the motion to deny the request for the television wall feature, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That request is denied.
May I ask for clarification?
No.
With respect to the property located at 711 Hickory Heights, I would move to grant the permission request for the existing hot tub. The, the hot tub is compatible with adjoining properties, appropriate for the neighborhood, and won't hinder or discourage the use of adjacent properties. And that's it?
Support.
Do I need permits?
So I have a motion.
Yes. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing hot tub. And that's it. I'm not gonna do screening for the hot tub.
Support.
So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That request is granted. Counsel, did you have a question?
Yeah, for the clarification with respect to the board's comments regarding the reduced height, if we do reapply, I guess I'm trying to get, I don't want to come back here again and have something that's not gonna be applied through the board. So there was comments on different heights, comments on location of screening. I guess I'm looking for some clarifications, the board's opinions on this.
I would say work with staff. Staff, I, you know, communicate with the staff. The staff will be able to guide you.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to, let's call the next item then. Item one, which is 1000 Lone Pine.
Good evening. I was ready.
Oh, good.
For a little bit of a zen moment here.
Yeah.
This is a little intense.
Well...
David Iafredi.
Is your heart pounding and your blood pumping?
No.
Okay, good.
Not whatsoever. This is actually pretty easy.
Okay, good.
I just like to see the community getting along.
Okay.
David Iafredi, 1000 Lone Pine Road.
Okay. And so what is your request?
I'm here today, well, it's kind of funny about the accessory structure. Do we have a photo of the, there we go. So I've lived in the community for 25 years. I think I have a staple of the community home, 1000 Lone Pine. I think that, matter of fact, the community liked it so much that they kind of emulated the library after I built my home there 25 years ago. Since I've lived in that property for 25 years, I bought the neighbor to the east of me, which was a vacant lot. And subsequently, two years ago, I bought 970 Lone Pine, which had a 1930s home on it, which we demolished. And we have now made it more of an estate-looking property. It's beautiful. There's Zen gardens throughout the property, wildlife. And on this beautiful property, we have a structure that was built in 1930s that is not visual to see by any neighbor, nor Lone Pine Road. And the stones that you see around there are from the Civil War. And after we were done demolishing the house, the construction department was pulling out of the driveway and said, "Oh, by the way, to my builder, this needs to be demolished." And of course, I was not happy with that comment, nor am I happy about that right now. And just based on no neighbors being able to see it, not visible from Lone Pine, I own the two adjacent properties to the west. Yes?
One simple question for you.
Yes.
Do you ultimately intend to combine all those parcels into one parcel?
I do not. And I will tell you why.
Yeah, I'm curious about that.
Well, so number one, it wouldn't have to be here if you did that. Okay, I know that. And here, here's the reason why. Well, number one, it's a tax deficit if I do that to the township. If I combine the properties, the tax is less for me as a homeowner. And I choose to take that, should you grant me my wish to keep them separate. I would like to be able to have the ability to build a home for my family on the 970 lot if I choose to. And I do not want to combine them. That's the only reason. And I own all the other properties next to them, and it looks as one. I've spent a tremendous amount of time, energy, and money to make them look cohesive and as one and protect the wildlife.
Yeah, I was just curious because, like I said, you wouldn't even have to come here.
Exactly, but I didn't want...
All I can say is you might build a...
Yeah, and I do appreciate that. And that's why, you know...
So let me, let me help you a little bit.
Sure.
So this is a historic, you know, amazing structure. You tore down a house, so now you need a variance. What are you gonna use it for in the interim? Is it just storage? Is it...
Oh, so right now, there's birdhouse stuff in there. The lady that did the design from the 1930s was a Cranbrook gardener. All aside, there's storage, you know, there's a few little birdhouses, stuff, so storage.
There's no kitchen facilities?
There's nothing in there. Nope.
So, you know, so you'd sign a single-family affidavit. You're not gonna move someone in there. And it's, it's essentially because it's such an amazing historic structure.
Correct.
That you want to keep it up. Okay. Any other questions?
There's nobody living in there and, you know.
Yeah, all right.
And matter of fact, if you look at the one photo in the back, when I was asked to get a view from the east to the west, there's actually a green sticker on the back from your building company because I wanted to update the electrical.
Right. So, so because you don't have a house anymore, that's why you're here. So this existing structure is different than the other ones we looked at.
Yes. Yes.
So I think we're okay.
Okay.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Correct.
I'd like to open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? You could come up and give us your name and address.
My name is Muhammad Tariq. I live on 960 Lone Pine Road, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan, 48302. David is my neighbor, a great neighbor. It's a pretty building also. It is at the boundary of my house. I would like for David to be able to keep it. I support him keeping it. My only comment or concern would be there are trees on my side of the house, right next to the structure. And if there is any, you know, branch falling on the structure, I want to make sure I'm not held responsible for that. That's the only reason. And those trees were planted by David, those were planted by your previous owner. And he said, well, he didn't find out about the boundaries until after he had planted the trees. He said, well, these are your trees now. So I just want to make sure.
So we can't answer that question for you?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and you can work that out with David. But thank you for your, anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Okay.
I hope he can keep it, yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Okay, so, you know, I don't know if you need to respond to us about that, but you can.
No, I'm fine.
You can work that out. All right, any other questions from the board? We ready for a motion?
I'm just curious, how far away is the property line? Like the little red knot?
It's right on there.
It's on?
It's been there since, it's been there since all of us were born.
So the tree you planted.
Well, I think, I don't know, maybe there's somebody over 100 years in here, but I'm not sure.
If they are, they're probably not listening to us.
Exactly.
Well, I'll make a motion if there's no other questions or discussion. Okay, I'll start with the permission request. In regards to the appeal at 1000 Lone Pine Road for the accessory structure, existing accessory structure, I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the accessory structure shall be harmonious to the neighborhood and will not be objectionable by nearby residents. For one, he owns all the lots, and actually, the adjacent neighbor has also approved it. And in reference to the dimensional variance at the same location, 1000 Lone Pine, for the existing structure, I also move that that variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because to remove that would be really detrimental, I think, for the historic nature of the building and the beauty of it. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. Again, this particular applicant owns the lots, and the adjacent neighbor right next door has also approved it and hopes that it will remain. The unique circumstances of the property, it had a unique building on it that is actually very quaint and beautiful in zen, I should say. And because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion also includes applications for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing structure. And I don't know about additional evergreen plantings.
No.
I don't think so. I don't think you need, so I'm not going to put that in my.
No.
And I'll support that.
That's good.
Okay.
So you had a motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you so much. Andrea had something to say about my.
Oh, no, no, no. I just wanted to make sure that I was stating that I don't think you need to have a permit.
What's that?
I don't think you need to have a permit.
I was thinking that as I was saying it. I was thinking, I don't think you need a permit.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was for the record.
I got something to say.
Did you include the single-family affidavit? I did not. The applicant must also, the motion also requests that the applicant file a single-family affidavit as well to make sure that you don't move anyone into the structure.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's supported.
Everyone's supporting it?
Support.
I guess I could call a vote, but I think we can put it in the minutes so it's clear. All right, calling the next item, number two, parcel 1917-276-022.
Hi, everyone. My name is Hatal Tai. I'm the current owner of this lot. It's a lake, it's a front lake property lot, belongs to 3747 Franklin. I recently bought this property. I still live on Telegraph. I'm planning to renovate it. But for the parcel that I'm here for today, I need to put a rock wall and also a gazebo. And I was told I need to apply for a variance for that. So that's the reason I'm here.
So there's, this will be the only structure on the property there? There's no home there?
Yeah, yeah. And it's not like a building structure, it's like a gazebo you buy from Costco or something, just put it there. But I was told I need to apply for a variance because it's within the setback, the 25 feet.
Why don't you come back to us after you have your home there?
Um, my home's going to take like two years to do. It's going to be a long process. I mean, I'm applying the permits with the city, with an architect and a builder. I mean, I'm making the home way larger than this, but I can still use this, I use it this summer already.
Is there a picture of the gazebo itself?
Yeah, I just showed one from Amazon or Costco, something like that. This is not the existing one.
No, no, got it.
I'm going to be.
Got it, okay. Any other questions from the board? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close public hearing. Bring it back. So we just want to be able to.
So we're approving an existing gazebo?
No. I'm sorry, I got that confusing. It's not. That was a sample of what he intends to buy. I thought he might have already purchased something, but that's.
So there's nothing there at the moment?
Nothing there. He wants to be able to enjoy the water, essentially. He's got, he's got a property that abuts the water, there's no home on it, but he wants to be able to enjoy the water and sit under the gazebo. I'm sure he thinks it's okay. It's nice, nice lake.
So I have a question. If it were further back and not encroaching into the natural feature setback, it looks like this structure probably only requires a pad footing, and then you'll just set it on there. You're not putting foundations into the ground. Why does it need to encroach into the natural feature setback if there's no other structure?
Because all I have, I mean, from, if you see the, this rock here, if you see this gazebo here, from, if you see the distance, it's 12 feet. I don't have more, I can't go back anymore because there's this thing like the fire pit.
You're talking about the path, the path.
Yes, yes.
Well, you could stick it.
This is the edge of it. I can't go back anymore. But I can go 15 feet from, from the west side, which is the, that's what I was told like in the, like the setback. So I can go, I can go to the left, I mean, to the right, I'm sorry, I don't mind, but I can't go back anymore.
Because there's an existing driveway or patio?
Yes.
Can it go on the patio?
Um, there's a, there's a fire pit in the middle. I didn't draw that.
Like in here? I didn't show.
Is there another picture of that? Can you go back to the, the actual? We have a picture of the path, yeah. So it curves around to the right there, and the fire pit's not in view?
Yes, and so it's going to be on the right side, like where the grass is?
Yes, okay. So you could really do it there.
It's 12 by 16, it's not a big one.
It looks to be just a stone path. I mean, that could be altered.
So I'm sorry, when you do your house, it will, the house is on the adjacent property, and it will become all one parcel?
No, it's, there's a street between them. The house is on the other side.
Okay, so there's never going to be a house here?
No.
This is always going to be your lake access or whatever?
Just a small piece of land that he wants to use and enjoy the water.
Or it doesn't look like that.
You mean from the aerial?
Yeah.
Well, so there's no, there's no address, it's just a parcel number. So there's a tax parcel ID, and the lot is on the other side of the road.
Gotcha.
DTE show it that 3748 has an address? I don't know, but it doesn't show on Google.
Gotcha.
And so then it's encroaching 13.
I mean, do you?
Well, let me just say, I mean, if the parcel's only 34 feet deep, no matter where this gets placed, it's in the natural features.
Yeah.
Correct. Okay.
So I guess it's a question, do you want him to be able to encroach in order to use the water in this manner with a, you know, a little shade and cheer?
Mm-hmm.
That's what it is, that's the issue. So it's a good thing Stephanie's not here.
Stephanie would, yeah, that'd be one no vote.
Stephanie would not be happy.
It's pretty small.
Well.
Well, I don't know.
I guess, here's the other thing. There's already an encroachment into it. You got the brick path, and you got a fire pit in there.
That's not me, though.
No, no, I know that. I'm just, we're balancing it. I'm okay with it. I'll just say that, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I just had to ask the questions.
Yeah, no, those are good questions.
I feel like the temporary nature of the structure and its likeness and all those things and a minimal intrusion into the land.
Yeah, I think it's okay.
So I just had to ask the question and understand the parameters.
Very good thinking there.
However, I mean, isn't it minimal intrusion? I'm just asking, because, I don't know, I've never installed a gazebo. I know the ones at Costco, I want one.
Yeah.
Well, but he's not driving, you know, footings into the ground.
It's not a slab or anything like that? Don't you have to put a slab? I mean, it's not cement or?
Yeah, but it's four inches deep. It's not going down 42 inches into the ground.
Slab on grade.
If you see, oh, I'm sorry, that's, if you see the furniture I have there, that's where the gazebo would be. Like, that's just temporary. So the gazebo is going to be on top of it.
Oh, to the, in the upper right?
Yes.
End corner?
Yes.
Okay. And that right, furniture is sitting on what right now?
On the grass.
Oh, okay. I thought that looked like it was on the pad.
It does look like it's on the pad.
There's quite a, like a gravel bank there, too. I don't, I don't.
It's looking natural to me, but.
Do we have a motion in the future?
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
In regards to the appeal at parcel 1917-276-022, I make a motion to approve the permission request, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Permission request for the gazebo. As submitted, I move the request be approved as submitted based on the information provided. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the size of the accessory structure is compatible with adjoining residential properties. The use is appropriate with the neighborhood for the lakefront property, and the accessory structure will be harmonious with the, with the neighborhood and not objectionable to nearby residents due to its, won't interfere with adequate light and supply of air due to its actual size and minimal intrusion as a foundation. Should the, well, it's also a dimensional request?
Yes.
Regarding the dimensional request, I also move to approve the accessory structure as submitted. Based on the information provided, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty, given the unique nature of the property. It's a small sliver of property. The only location for this gazebo has been demonstrated by the applicant, and strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome on it because of the minimal size of the property. And it is not self-created, again, because of the property situation. Should the motion be approved, all applications for permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
I have a motion and support, any discussion?
Are you including the rock erosion buffer?
Oh, yes. The motion is to include the rock erosion buffer. It clearly needs to be updated in that area and to maintain the size of the parcel that's there for, as the practical difficulty.
So that's, that's included in the motion as well?
Yes.
All right. So I.
I'm sorry, just to make it clear, this right picture is not me, that's my neighbor. So that's what I'm planning to be, like my neighbor. This is, on the left is me right now.
Thank you. It will be compatible.
Right, so you're going to add the.
Yeah, make it like conforming with the neighbor.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
So you understand that. All right, so I think we have a motion and support that includes the rock erosion feature as pictured on the right-hand side of the screen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed, just to the gazebo, not to the rock wall.
Okay. Okay.
I got it.
Okay, the motion, congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you, thank you. Can you go back to this picture, please? I just have one quick question. This one. Yeah, I'm sorry, just one quick question. You see this cable from DTE? This is, this is encroachment, so we cannot do anything about that? It's, it's within five feet of the property.
We're the zoning board.
It's very ugly.
Yeah. We do an amazing job, but not that amazing. We can't help you with that.
I have, I have three of them to support one panel.
Yeah.
So nothing can be done about that.
Well, yeah, I would contact DTE.
They will do nothing, I would say. Thank you very much.
Okay, we can't, we can't do that. That's not within our, go. Okay, calling the next item, item three, 6862 Halyard.
Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Cordell Willis, 6862 Halyard Road, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan, 48301. I'm looking to build a shed in my backyard, with 16 by 24 shed for storage. When we purchased our home in 2022, we were moving from a colonial to a ranch for the sole purpose of, for my disabled sister-in-law and mother, mother-in-law was being healthy at that time. Since that time, she's had pneumonia, which severely declined her health, and we now do not have the space we thought we purchased. So now we need storage space for medical and personal items. And the house is on a slab, does not have a basement.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Any questions? Open this to the public for a comment. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close public hearing, bring it back to the board for the shed.
I can make a motion. In regards to the appeal at 6862 Halyard Road, this is for permissional request for accessory structure. I move the request be approved and submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property to the fact that it's in the backyard, and it meets a side setback, and it's not visible from the neighbors. I'd like to handle the dimensional variance next in regard to the same appeal at 6862 Halyard Road for the, for the size of the structure based on the percentage of square footage required. I move the variance be approved and requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome in making it smaller. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that it will be screened from the neighbors. Unique circumstances for the property have been demonstrated because of the size of the property, and it's not, it's not self-created due to the reasons stated above. If approved, the motion must include, the application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the garden shed, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. And additional evergreen plantings will be required to screen the shed from public view, and plantings must meet or exceed the height of the shed at the time of installation for 12 months of the year.
Support.
So I have a motion and support. It's part of the discussion, so, yeah.
I have a question.
About the screening.
Yeah, I have a question on the screening because it looks like it's, it's directly behind the home, so I don't think we need to screen the shed entirely, but what's everybody's thoughts?
Like on the side, don't, I think your neighbors, yeah, I think it means screening on the side.
Between the houses, there could be some.
There's actually, there should be a photo of a bush, bushes behind and to the side. I will say that in front of the shed, which I didn't, Isabella did tell me to bring, that I should have submitted landscape planning.
Oh, okay, that's good. Do you have a landscape plan?
I figured it out today, what I needed to do.
Oh, okay.
At 4 o'clock.
That's very nice.
Are you?
Ooh.
Fire in the sun.
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
All around the edges where there's already trees and bushes, but where it says new trees and plants, that's what, the area I would, would need to screen for the neighbor that's one direction.
Are the existing ones on the property line evergreens, or are they?
Um, there are all kinds of things.
But it looks like there's some open spaces to the right of the shed, too, aren't there?
To the right?
Well, to the east, I'm trying to think, north? Which way is north?
Don't ask me which way.
Right there, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe put a couple more.
And you can put a couple on that side too?
Well, the house is actually covering, if you're talking about towards the bottom of the drawing?
Yeah.
On the side.
To the side.
To the side.
To the right of it, I'm sure.
Oh, to the right. Well, there's trees and a shed already there from my neighbor, but there's definitely pine tree and
So that you're saying this drawing's not accurate? These are...
It is not 100% accurate. I'm not an architect or a landscape designer. I know it's covered and like I said, there should be a photo. Is there a photo of that?
Well, I'm just saying, the way the motion reads now is it has to be screened from public view. So you're gonna need to add them on the side. I don't, you know...
Well, I guess what I'm saying is it is screened from public view. I mean, where I have new trees, plants, that is the only
Is it evergreen, so it has to be screened 12 months out of the year?
Yes, yes. Yeah, there's always, there's always greenage there.
So is the shed on the adjacent property, is that located like straight across basically from where you're putting yours?
Yes, it's pretty much in line. Are you talking about the one that's, there's already a shed there?
32?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, it's in back, yes.
Okay.
Where it says 80, 23, 6.8, so there's a shed right there.
Okay, is that shed screened on one side?
To separate us? No.
Okay, alright.
I can see straight to that.
Alright, so we're in the middle of discussion. All those in favor of the motion as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your request is granted.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Alright. Next item, item 4, 170 Alice Avenue. Very interesting.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. I'm Josh, I'm with Deverno Remodeling, looking to do this project. So there's an existing garage there now. We're gonna demo the existing garage and rebuild a new garage.
And it's going in the exact same footprint?
I think the new garage is a little bit wider. I think I put it in there, the exact plan. Is that all you have from us?
But in terms of the variance request...
The setback, the five foot?
The setback.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna go like exactly the same spot.
Alright.
Any other questions from the board? Open this to the public for comment. Anyone like to comment on the garage? Close public comment and bring it back.
What, you said the existing one is already encroaching? Is that what it is?
Yes, it's on the same spot. It's really close to the back lot line. You can see it in the picture.
Alright, well, I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
In regards to the appeal at 170 Alice Ave, I make a motion to approve the permission request for the proposed garage. The applicant has demonstrated compliance with the 42-7.6 standards and given that the size of the accessory structure is compatible with the adjoining properties based on it's replicating virtually what's there, all the neighbors would be used to that size. It meets our ordinance size for height and the location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage adjacent property use. I would also like a motion for, make a motion for the dimensional variance to be approved at the same property. Given that the motion to approve the dimensional variance for the garage to encroach 11 feet into the required 25-foot rear setback. Again, the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome given the rest of the landscape and situation of the house on this modest-sized lot. It's all set up for the current garage location. So it is not self-created. Should the variance motion be approved? Application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the garage and all permits obtained prior to construction. A single-family affidavit's required for the detached accessory structure. And I'm not gonna require additional evergreen plantings. I think the fact of a garage in that situation is existing.
Support.
Motion in support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Awesome, thank you.
Calling item 5, 6455 Gulfview Drive. Is the applicant ready?
Good evening, we're here tonight to seek approval for a variance to build the deck in the front of our property. And it is a 12 by a 12 by eight-foot engineered lumber deck. That will be between our existing porch and then, as you can see, there's boxwoods on either side of our walkway to the to the house.
How tall are those boxwoods?
Boxwoods are about 32 inches tall. The deck would be between 14 and 16. Just depends how sloped towards the street or the yard slopes towards the street. So we are what? We are we 96 square feet. We're 72 feet back from the street, which we're, we sit in front of Oakland Hills Golf Course, which is on the other side of the street. We're 42 feet from the southern property line and 49 from the northern property line. We've got an empty lot that we share with, our subdivision shares with Bank of America to the south and, like I said, golf course to the west and a neighbor to the north.
Could you give your name for the record?
Oh, sure, Greg Turkot, T-U-R-K-O-T. Sorry about that.
Any other questions? Open this.
Oh, I was just curious, the deck in the front, is there a reason why you're putting a deck in the front?
We've got T-Box for Oakland Hills right there, so we've got a nice, beautiful golf course to look at, so sitting on there. We've got a four-foot slab for a porch right now. This just extends that out.
Yeah, because I saw it.
And it's not attached to the house. It's gonna be on screw piles and...
Yeah, it's not a typical front door because you're looking over the golf course.
No, we love the view. That would just let us enjoy it more. It's just strictly for residential.
I have a question for staff. If this were an extension of concrete like the front porch, if it were just concrete on grade, is a variance required or is it, it's the deck construction?
That's correct.
Because I just have a question. Did you consider doing more paved?
It's engineered lumber. It's more, I think it's more earth-friendly and pouring all the concrete is more disruptive, I guess. We like the look of the deck. It's concrete-colored, so it looks like the house. Our house is beige, so it doesn't stand out.
Might not be as hot.
What's that?
Might not be as hot, reflect the...
Cracked. Less prone to cracking, things like that.
It's more of a backyard thing.
Right, that's why I was asking why.
I'm just saying, if you've been here, his, his front yard is almost like a backyard because there's...
Yeah, backyard is a lot shorter than the front and then we've got the sun setting over the course. It's just kind of a beautiful view. And the closest other house is probably 6470, which bounds Maple and Gulfview.
Yeah, it's a very unusual area. That's all I'd say. It's a typical...
Thank you.
Sure.
Open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this? Close public hearing. Like, for example, what, if anything, do you have in your backyard?
We have a, well, we have a two-season glass porch, I guess, where my wife uses for her office. Backyard is probably half the width of the front.
Right, but the view out the back is not anywhere...
View out the back is 20-foot-tall evergreens and then a fence and then a neighbor, which is a rental house behind us, so not much to look at.
Then I'll make, I'll make a motion. In regards to the appeal at 6455 Gulfview Drive for a front yard deck, I move that the variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. Because without that, he would not be able to reasonably appreciate the view, which I'm sure is the reason why you probably bought the home. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because it's, you know, ground level and there's also hedges around it. Unique circumstances with the property. Again, this is a Gulfview property and it would make more sense for the deck to be in the front as opposed to the back. And because of that, it is not self-created. With that, if approved, the motion must include applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the deck and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
I'm not sure if it needs evergreen plantings.
No.
I don't think so, so I am not going to put that in the motion.
I'll support.
Motion in support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Aye, sorry, opposed.
Opposed? One opposed.
Uh, so noted. Motion carries out.
Motion carries out.
You're all set?
You're all set.
Hey, thank you guys so much.
I play golf on there, so...
Good evening.
Yep, go right ahead. You want to give me the name and address?
Yes, sure. My name is Chris Kassodis. I'm here with my wife, Katie Alaria. We purchased 5400 Hollow Drive in early 2023, moved in around June of last year. We appreciate you hearing our variance request today. We're here seeking variances for construction of a fence in our backyard. We've been in touch with the ordinance department a number of times in preparing our packet and think we've complied with all the recommendations that they made here. Our understanding of these rules is that the requirement when owning a dog is a four-foot fence with setbacks of 16 feet off each side lot line and 25 feet off the back lot line. With these setbacks, we would lose 60 to 70% of our backyard, disallowing us from the full use of our property and any potential future backyard plans. We also don't really understand how the owning of a dog at this point in time should disadvantage us in perpetuity and depreciate the value of our home should we ever look to sell it. It's our understanding that if we did not own a dog, we could have simply requested a permit for a four-foot fence at the lot line of our property. And it appears if we adopted a dog after the construction of a fence, there would also be no issues. And so this confuses me as to the intent of these rules. The last piece I would like to address is that we've received a lot of varied input from the ordinance office in preparing this request and there may still be some confusion as to what exactly we are requesting. We would love to put up a six-foot wood privacy fence in our backyard. That would be particularly welcome with our golden retriever and the abundant wildlife moving through our neighborhood. We've been told that this is not something that the board would approve. So we've been asked instead to submit a four-foot fence, which we've done. I admit this... We've also been asked to submit an aluminum fence instead of wood, which we've also accepted and that's our request today. We're happy to work with the township on any further requirements that they might have. The last thing, we've also been advised there may be, there may need to be some screening along the entire length of the fence to shield us from neighbors in the road. I would note that we have several letters from the neighbors who live adjacent to our property. All of them have been fine with this addition. We've also hired a landscape company to manage plantings throughout the property. And we're happy to add additional screening as needed. However, we would respectfully request that screening across the entire length of the fence should not be required. Our hope is not to create a wall of trees that we could accomplish without appearing in front of this board. Instead, we hope to maintain the open field of the backyards in our area, which we believe is preferable to everyone and not outside what already occurs in our broader neighborhood. The selection of the shorter aluminum fence, we believe, accomplishes that goal. We're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, just for clarification, you're going with a four-foot fence now?
Four-foot fence, correct.
Okay, so all you need is a dimensional variance for the location. Okay.
Okay, did not realize that. Okay. Any other questions on the board? That was a good, I was gonna ask that question, Carol, thank you. I'll open this to public. Anyone here like to comment on this item? I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. It's now a four-foot fence. And it's not completely screened. It's not on the property line. Could we go back to the, kind of the aerial view of it? No, I mean, where we, it shows the
Oh, the side plan?
The screening and, yeah. So are those trees that you proposed to plant?
They're already there.
Those are already there.
Oh, those ones are already there, okay. That's what I was gonna say, how did you sort of come up with that pattern? It's only four feet. Wasn't a dog, you can put it on the property line.
No, it's not.
It's only an 87-foot.
The really question of screening?
You can't screen on the 20, you can't screen on the 24, 25 line?
No.
Where's, can you go to the aerial?
It's a pretty big lot.
It's really not, though. It's showing it some leaves.
How big is your lot? Do you know?
I do not.
In the back or?
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
87-foot we, feet wide, is that right? 87 feet?
Uh, 87 feet is the width of the fence.
87.
Oh, plus the two, the four, the nine?
110, 100 feet.
100 foot, okay.
75. So it overlaps the house presumably. There's a door that would open out the side there to let the dogs out?
The, where it, yeah, where...
The 12-foot section there is sort of forward of the...
The door is in the back of the house, not on the side.
Okay.
Like, where the cutout is at 21 feet, the door is just to the right of that.
Okay. I mean, I guess if the neighbors aren't here saying they want it screened, you know, ordinance says screened from public view.
There are letters of opposition.
There are letters.
There are letters of opposition. Four letters of opposition, two in support.
So, alright, bear with me a minute.
Okay.
We're encroaching 24 feet into the required 25-yard setback on the one side.
In the back.
Oh, on the back, okay. So there's no way to screen the back. There's just not.
And it's really
It's tight on, yeah.
Adjacent neighbor.
Alright, I'm gonna make a...
It's four feet. That's all there...
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion. You guys can do with it what you want. With respect to property located at 5400 Hollow Drive, I would move to grant the permission request for the proposed dog enclosure fence. Frankly, you know, the fence is appropriate to contain your dog. And so you have demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7 standards. For the dimensional variance, I would move to grant the dimensional variance for the dog enclosure. Encroaching 12 feet and 7 feet into the required 16-yard setback and 24 feet into the required 25-foot rear setback because you have demonstrated practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be burdensome due to the size of the backyard. And there's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. No one has appeared tonight with any objections to it. And it's not self-created. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the fence. All permits must be obtained prior to construction. And I'm going to not add any landscaping on this one.
Support.
I have a motion in support, any discussion? I guess I can leave it at that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling item 7. 700 Browning Court.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rick Neff from Iron Construction. I'm from 9410 South Durand Road, Duran, Michigan. I'm here representing Michael and Carol Lombardi. We recently applied for a screen porch and we were trying to hit the setbacks and the longer they were waiting for me to come build it, the more they wanted to go out a little bit further. Their house is on the end of a cul-de-sac. The porch is, right now I had the setbacks. I don't see, did you happen to have a plot plan or any? Okay. Okay, the porch originally, I hit it at 10 foot 6 out on the one side, or 11 foot 6, I'm sorry, on the one side so that I can meet the 15-foot setbacks. The more they laid it out, they figured with the door coming out the side, they're not gonna have enough room to really set a table or anything there. So she was wanting to extend it off to three foot further going that way, which is 14 foot 6 inches. Yeah, right here. I hit it at 12, it'll be a 12-foot from the property line. And that is a fence with a school to that side of them, school property. So it is all just a big open field of school property with the and they, like I said, they are at the end of a cul-de-sac, so it isn't blocking anybody's view. It's just giving them a little bit more room in that porch for their furnishing that they were looking for.
So is the, I thought, is the is the existing deck being taken out and then just covered up?
Yeah, we're taking the existing deck out.
And the porch is going over it?
Yeah, we're doing a deck, a track stack, another composite back, like the other guy was talking, with a screen and porch over top of it. So the roof line's gonna go up over top of that one area right there. Which encroaches like three foot in the corner of that room area. It isn't the full room, but it's sort of at an angle. It is getting into it.
Is the, is the footprint the same or less than the existing deck? Is the footprint the same or less than the existing deck?
It's more than the existing deck. The existing deck, I believe, is right at the twelve-foot setbacks, or fifteen-foot setbacks, I'm sorry. So they wanted to extend it. But the more they were laying out, they started pulling the deck out, started laying out where the room would go, where the furnishing was going. They figured, well, they needed a little bit more room for a table on that area is what they were looking for.
Gotcha. All right, any other... Any questions? I'll open this to the public for comment. Close public comment, bring it back to the board.
I can make a motion.
Go right ahead.
In regard to the appeal at 700 Browning Court for the permission request for accessory structure, move that the request be approved and submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The use of the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood as it fits into that side of the house and will be functional to the house. As far as the dimensional variance goes, in regard to the appeal at the same address, 700 Browning Court, for the setback, the side yard setback variance, I move the variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the shape of the lot and the unique shape of the angle that reduces the ability to build to the side yard. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that it's a school adjacent to them, so there's really not a neighbor. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given the fact that it is a unique property that is not a rectangle, that it's got angles, and it's not self-created. If approved, the motion must include applicant for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen. The porch from public view and plantings must meet or exceed the height of the deck or the structure at the time of installation for twelve months out of the year, and I think that it's on the east side.
Yeah, it's on the east side of the house, yes.
Support.
So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
So calling the next item, item eight, 5054 Zerling Court.
Hi, I'm Kelly Schroeder, 5054 Zerling Court. We would like to install a sauna that is not nearly as big as what's listed on that page. It's going to be...
Okay, and the sauna's going under... You have an elevated deck, and it's just gonna fit right underneath it.
On top of a patio.
Okay.
Oh, good, they have the new photo. Okay, so the photo on the right, bottom right, shows where the contractor has installed that teak wall, basically, for the one neighbor who could see it, and we've talked to her. She has no issues.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Open this to public for comment. Any comment? Close public comment, bring it back.
With respect to the property located at 5054 Zerling Court, I would move to grant the permission request because applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7 standards. The structure is compatible with adjoining properties, appropriate for the neighborhood, and will not negatively impact any of the neighbors. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the sauna, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction, and I'm not gonna add any installation because of the wall.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Okay, thanks for your time.
Calling item nine, 7303 Meadow Lake Hills Drive. Is the applicant ready?
I'm Louise Graniter, and this is my husband, Neil. He's just here for moral support, I think. Our address is 7303 Meadow Lake Hills Drive. We would like to extend the deck that we already have, I believe another ten feet, and then twenty feet.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight feet wide. We submitted our proposal, and it came back with that angle, I guess to cut down on the number of square feet. The problem was that our condo association only would approve it if there were no acute or obtuse angles, whatever those are called, and the township only would do it with that angle. So that being said, we talked to the contractor, and he said, "Let's go big or go home," and he just squared that whole thing off. I don't think any of the neighbors have objected in any way, and actually, we got the idea from the people across the street who have pretty much exactly what we want, and it would just allow us... We have a beautiful view in the back. We do have the largest lot in the subdivision, so as far as... We had never heard of property envelope before, but as far as that goes, percentage-wise, it's not nearly as big as what some other people have done with decking and patios. And I don't know what else I can add, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Any questions from the board?
Just a quick question. It's an open deck with the railing, no more. You're not extending it.
No, it will not have a roof, and it will have the same railing that we already have. It'll...
Extend your outdoor space.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll open this for public comment. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close public hearing and bring it back for discussion or a motion.
With respect to the property located at 7303 Meadow Lake Hills, I would move to grant the permission request for the proposed deck because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The structure is compatible and appropriate for the neighborhood and will not have any negative impact on adjacent properties. In addition, I would move to grant the request for the dimensional variance, which would allow encroachment six feet into the required sixteen-foot side setback and ten feet into the required thirty-five-foot rear yard setback. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be burdensome due to the shape of the lot, which is quite unique, and the corners cut, which results in the deck extending into the setback. If it were a simply straight line in the back, you wouldn't have to apply for the variance. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. It's a use that other... Some of the other neighbors have as well, and it allows them to enjoy the property outside. And as I said, unique circumstances are applicable with property by virtue of the shape of the lot, and it's not self-created. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction, and I'm not gonna require any screening on this.
There was a letter in the packet referencing that, so I just want to bring that to your attention.
Referencing?
The need for additional screening.
Either way.
The adjoining property owner. To the rear.
To the rear? Or the side?
Can you put the aerial up?
Yeah.
Put the aerial up for me, please.
I know exactly.
Is the air kinda...
I don't...
Where would you put the screen?
Seventy-sixty.
Yeah. Seven sixty?
You're pretty far removed.
Oh, yeah, on the other side of the...
Nah.
I'm not gonna put landscaping unless somebody else...
Do it.
Yeah, no.
Just wanted to bring that to your attention.
All right.
All right, so just so we have a fully informed vote. So we have a motion?
Support.
Support. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and also, I was really nervous, and I feel much better now, so thanks.
It's the moral support. That's what it was.
You did a great job. You did a great job. You're like a pro.
You guys are a team.
We'll have you come back and coach some other applicants.
Yes, exactly.
Calling item 10, 5067 Wing Lake. Is the applicant ready?
The applicant did indicate to me he's overseas, and he was having a difficulty. He called me yesterday and said he was having difficulty getting his contractor to attend the meeting, so I wanted to leave it to the discretion of the board, but we certainly can present the proposal.
Yeah, let's do it.
Let's do it.
The request is to locate a ground-mounted mechanical unit adjacent to an existing unit on the site you can see highlighted in the bottom right-hand corner. Due to this location next to an existing AC unit, the applicant is seeking a variance to be further than five feet from the home, which would be considered not immediately adjacent. That's the request.
So I'll open this to public comment. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close public hearing, bring it back for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion in regards to the appeal at 5067 Wing Lake Road for dimensional variance for a ground-mounted mechanical unit not immediately adjacent to the building. I move that the variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because the... Actually, putting it next to the AC unit is probably the most practical place to put the generator. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because there's already a unit there. We're just putting one right adjacent to it. Unique circumstances, again, all of the hookups and everything are right there, so that is unique, and because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the generator, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction, and additional evergreen plantings shall be required to screen the generator from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the generator at the time of planting.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Request is granted. Calling item 11, parcel 1904277050. Is the applicant ready?
Good evening. Joseph Pauli, owner of this lot. Lots 34 and 35 on Alice Avenue, Bloomfield Hills Township, 48302. So just a quick backstory here. I've been connected with the street for over ten years. My sister and her family live there, four nieces and nephews. I purchased the lot through... Basically, the property owner kind of gave the neighbors a heads-up that it was for sale. I jumped on it, and since then, I've been trying to go through the process in the right way, checking all the boxes, making sure I don't look like a fool when I come to this meeting. So in summary, I'm requesting...
Or build something that hasn't been approved and have to come in and get approval for it.
Yes.
I'm just referencing some times we see...
So, yeah, so essentially, I'm requesting a variance here. I think it's one and a half feet on this rear setback and four and a half on the side setback. Just for context, I think I counted there are fourteen houses on the street that are on fifty-foot lots that may or may not meet the current setback, so I don't think it's something that's extremely unique or different as far as the consistency of the street. Yeah. Do you have any questions, I guess?
Any questions from the board? Yeah, 'cause this Alice Avenue's a...
Yeah, it's all trees right now. I think it's the only lot on the entire street that's just trees. So, yeah, the property right next to it, actually 254, is on a fifty-foot wide lot.
Okay, so I'll open this for public comment. Anyone like to comment on this item?
I didn't know what else to do with the pictures. It was just trees there, so...
So I'll close public comment and bring it back for discussion or a motion.
I guess I kind of have a question on... Maybe a little more information on your practical difficulty with that smaller lot next door. You're actually asking to be pretty darn close to that side. You know, whether the house couldn't be three feet smaller, like...
So on the rear, the one foot, I did talk to like a couple contractors, and I'm still in the early stages. The rooms upstairs would be quite small, and I... Essentially, what like what was the minimum that I could go was this one and a half feet. On the side, to the one neighbor, it's just basically a porch, a covered porch that's gonna be there. So I guess hearing what I've heard from the other presentations, maybe some trees or some coverage there so that there isn't as much of an encroachment, but...
So your site plan... So the site plan doesn't exactly reflect the elevation drawings. It's just a box, right?
Yep.
So it's the site plan that shows that highlighted area on the left, kind of shows it the whole distance. Is that all covered porch there that we see in the elevations?
Yep, that yellow highlighted area would be the covered porch, so the top right-hand corner of this.
Yeah, it does run the whole length. I see.
Yep.
Far be it for me to ask why you want a covered porch on the side if you have a great backyard, but I guess I'm just struggling with...
It's just trying to build my dream home, and I love to sit outside, and I've always wanted a... If I could do it, I would love a completely wraparound porch, honestly, but...
Yeah, 'cause it doesn't make the house larger, so it doesn't give you room to make the rooms larger, 'cause it's just the porch that's encroaching, right? Because initially, it was... I knew he wanted to maximize the lot.
Yeah. So I can understand your front-to-back dimension, and then that is a... One of the tolerances that we're looking for, and when you're explaining room sizes on the front-to-back dimension. I'm just... Especially with the smaller lot next door, curious about, you know, whether that covered porch element you're talking about, you know, isn't going further over there. I don't know. Anyone else?
Just to be clear, it would go towards the larger. The porch would be going towards 284.
Okay.
Not towards 254.
I got my north arrows wrong. Oh, so your garage and the wider setback is...
On the other...
That's the small house.
Correct. Correct.
Thank you. That makes all the difference to me.
Any other questions? Let's see. Can't remember, did I open the public hearing? I'll open it again. Anyone like to comment on this? Close public hearing then, and bring it back for a motion. I think we're ready. We've had really good vetting and questions. So Glenda, I think you've earned the right to make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion in regards to the appeal at, well, 19-04-277-050. Sorry, it's not a permission request, a dimensional?
Yep.
Thank you. Regarding to the appeal at the said address, I move that the variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because of the relative size of the lot and the dimension, the dimension front-to-rear and common standard room sizes in today's homes. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the limit of the rear setback. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the larger setback being against the smaller property, and the unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated. If the motion is approved, all application for all necessary permits must be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling item 12, 6091 Franklin Road.
Sanjay Lakani, owner of the property. The reason is for retaining wall, existing retaining wall. If you look on the landscape plan there, can I...
Have a pointer if you'd like, yeah. You just have to hold down the button here.
Okay. If you can look, this is the existing house, and this is the south walkway, and from the south walkway to go into the pool from the kitchen, there used to be, before we got this house, there was a retaining wall existing there, and there were paver steps going down from the south walkway towards the pool. Was old and worn out, the tread rises, the height of the tread was more than nine inches. The pavers were out of vac, there was no railing, fall risk. So as we were remodeling, we said, "We'll take it out, put a new structure in." At that time, we felt it is just replacing the existing structure. If you're not building anything new, we felt that we didn't need any permission, and we proceeded. As we proceeded to take that structure out, the demo led to... You can see the arborite is there. The demo led to more aggressive demo than was supposed to be. is there, the demo led to more aggressive demo than was supposed to be. The roots of all the arborites were exposed. So we said we have to cover them or otherwise we're going to lose those arborites and the privacy hedge that arborite is gave from the pool, we would lose it, you know, extra expense of arborites. So we said the best would be put a retaining wall. So we put a retaining wall and as we put the retaining wall, we had to match it to the concrete pool deck which we are planning to put and we matched it to that. That retaining wall is about three feet. At that time, we felt that that also didn't need any permission. So we built the wall, but then we were informed that we needed permission, ZBA variance, because it was less than two feet and more than two, less than two feet, less than four feet from the edge and more than two feet in height. So this retaining wall which you see in the corner there here, this one, that is a five-feet structure and that is where we'd be putting steps to come down to the pool deck area and this is the three-feet wall. So essentially, mistake has been made by us and we're here to seek permission and allow us to keep that wall.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, so the five-foot portion of the wall and the steps, are they, was the wall five feet before?
Yes, it was.
Are you putting the steps in the same location they were before?
Yes, the way the steps would come down would be more ergonomically placed, closer to the house rather than as it was encroaching in the whole pool deck.
But same area, same height.
Same, absolutely, same, same, absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions? I'll open this for public comment. Does anyone like to comment on this item? Good evening.
Brian Ritter, Wing Lake Farms, also a resident, 6800 Franklin Road, Bloomfield Township, Michigan. There are several concerns with regard to this application. We feel that it is incomplete at its best. If you scroll back to a couple of the other photographs, we'll find that the original pool equipment is not being placed where it was or the change-out on the pool equipment. It is now being relocated to the section behind that five-foot wall. Now, part of this application as far as its incompleteness is the fact that it doesn't provide an actual site plan that we can verify the dimensions. These are just guestimates of where these things should be. That purple spot that you see there is what was supposed to be the original pool equipment location. There are a couple of neighbors here that can verify that that's not actually the location. It was a little bit farther over. And if you look at the yellow area, there are not steps that are intended to come down there. That is where the pool equipment is to be located or the new pool equipment. That in and of itself requires a variance. It is on one of the, oh, one of the drawings here that it shows that the wall itself requires a minimum of an eight-foot variance. Dr. Lakani has just told us that it only require, well, it requires a twelve-foot variance.
So, so hold on, I'm just wanting to say, I'd like to ask staff, so we're not dealing with pool equipment tonight and he's-
That was not a request on the application.
Yeah, so you're trying to say that the application should have included that? Is that the point you're trying to make?
Well, the application certainly should have included that because the relocation of the pool equipment is not within local ordinance or zoning variance. It's on the side of the property and it's within the 16-foot side yard setback. Doctor has had a survey done on the property and there is question of whether the fence that's shown in the photographs is actually all on the property. Part of it may be, part of it may not be. Now, to exacerbate that in an effort to create pool code and ordinance, we need to extend that fence and build it around the property. I've asked Dr. Lakani-
So, but, so, hold on a second.
For a master plan.
So, okay, so the only thing we have in front of us tonight is the existing retaining walls for the variance. So could you just continue your comments to that? Well, we'll ask the staff about that, but all we're talking about, so you're kind of noted, you're saying that there's other conditions that need to be addressed with variance. Do you have any comments on the retaining wall?
Well, first of all, it's, we're not asking for permission. We're asking for forgiveness because the wall is in. It's never been inspected or anything along that line. It was just done and this does not show us or be able to provide us enough information to state exactly where that wall is in conjunction with the property and the property line. So we don't know whether it's four feet, we don't know whether it's eight feet, we don't know whether it's five feet. It doesn't meet code and if you look at the photographs, it creates a potential hazard because it's a standable wall that somebody could jump off of into the pool and based on the extensive remodeling of the pool, the pool itself requires other variances. The simple fact that he's relocating the pool equipment and then utilizing the wall to mask that equipment is not applicable. And there are multiple circumstances that drive this application. We would ask as a community for a master plan that we can all look at and discuss that meets local code and-
So, I'm sorry, may I miss that? You're speaking on behalf of the association?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so you're the-
I am the restrictions chair.
Restrictions chair, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item?
My name's James Olssheimer. I'm Mr. Lakani's neighbor to the south and that house next to, I think that my address is 6125 Dakota Circle. So I just, in regard, I'll try to keep this to the retaining wall here.
Yes.
I'm much like Brian, have a whole, I have a whole list of things that are wrong, but I'll keep it to the retaining wall.
Well, that's all that's in front of us.
Okay, so this law, this wall was being constructed and as it was being constructed, the grade of the ground was changed and the wall was extended from what the existing structure was. That extension has caused the wall to be out of variance and that's why we're here. I had three simple requests for Mr. Lakani, that is, that everything being done is on his property. And I questioned when I first made contact with him about this, about the arborites that are existing along the wall. And I said, did you get a survey done? He said, no, I did not, but I was told that those arborites are on my property. We had to put those, that fence up because of the pool. That's our property. He had the survey done and it, the wall is on his property, but he cannot put the arborites there because they are encroaching on my property. So he can't encroach on my property, he can't create soil erosion and water runoff into my property. It's already pretty wet and there's a drain coming right out of that wall into my property. Again, getting back to the height. So anyways, at the end, he extended it and that is more than four feet and it's decreased my views. That's the third condition I had for this is I can't encroach on my property, can't have soil erosion and water runoff and can't decrease my views because it's on a lake and I want to, that's why I bought the house. There's 10 arborites that are extended and the wall has extended and that is higher than four feet and I do not approve that and I request that you deny this motion.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item?
Good evening. My name is Rudy Fisher. I live at 6139 Dakota Circle. I don't know if in your packet I sent, I hand-delivered a letter yesterday to be included. I support the association's position as well as Mr. Olssheimer's position on this. In fact, I am a prior owner of the property at 6125 and I've been in the house, I've been on the property. There was never a five-foot-high retaining wall as you come out of that door wall. In addition, the change in grade since my lot is pie-shaped as is Jamie's, it's 30 feet away. That water comes from Jamie's lot right onto mine, washing out the shrub beds. So we are at this point requesting you deny their request as presented. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item?
Karen Meyerson, 6033 same street Franklin, down two houses. I think one of the problems with this property is there haven't been a lot of permits pulled and they work late at night and on the weekends. So anything that seems like a simple proposal is just one piece of the puzzle of not asking permission before to our association. So I think you have to look carefully at the bigger piece of all the things that have not been granted and approved beforehand and not think of this as a simple thing with the facts being as they are. Because we've lived there a lot longer and it doesn't seem like the same story.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item? So I'll close the public hearing and let the applicant respond.
Right, so the question is, the prop, the wall is three feet. It's a tiered wall. The wall is about 60 feet total length, about, it's an L-shaped. The bottom of the L is about six and about 10 feet, maybe more than. Maybe, can you move?
Which one?
Next one maybe? Next. Okay, here if you see.
You have to hold the button down.
Okay, if you see this one, this is the L-shaped and, sorry, I'm having difficulty. Can I just come there and show it? This is the L-shaped one here which is going, this is five feet. This one is three feet. The arborite that you see, when I, can you see the fence here? This fence was there when I purchased the property. When I purchased the property, the previous owner said that is in our property. When I spoke with him after the survey, he still maintained it is in our property. So that was pre-existing. The arborites which are there, they were pre-existing. We had survey done and the survey showed part of the arborites, after the fact that that was the case, all of the arborites are in his property, all of them are in my properties. The new ones which he planted, they are completely in my property. The whole retaining wall is completely in my property. The pool equipment was existing in that purple area before. Now, that was an eyesore. I don't know why they are object to it, but it was a complete eyesore. There was a grill around it, that fence was dilapidated, rusted. Taking that out, moving it out of there, putting it under the stairs which you're going to make, is going to take those things completely out of view from everyone. The pool pump is going to be almost library level decibel whiteness. It's going to be working all day, highly energy efficient, no sound pollution, no visual pollution to anyone. It'll be completely out of everyone's sight. The stairs which existed before, we didn't change any grade there. There was a kitchen, you walk out of the kitchen and you walk down. So I didn't raise it or lower it, it was exactly the same five feet. I don't know why he says there wasn't anything. That was the way we were coming out of the kitchen, going to the pool deck area and that is what we are replicating. So it is nothing that is new. Had we known about this, we would have kept the same retaining wall there and just built stairs separately. There would be no question because that would be the existing structure. Now, because that was not very strong, that was not very sturdy and the retaining wall was failing, we had to put it, otherwise it would not last. So I'm not sure if they object to it or if you deny it, how am I going to go from my kitchen to the south walkway into the pool deck? There's just no way. I cannot get to the pool deck if there's no way. And so there's just, it's impossible for anyone to walk out down there. And in fact, if you look at the Jamie, although he had a change of heart today, I don't know why, but in the original application, he has written a strong letter of support in that and the pictures which he put in that, if you can scroll, and that's part of the application, in that, if you look the view from his house as it is now and it was before, no change. I don't know why it means-
I have pictures.
Exactly, so the pictures which you-
No, I have pictures.
No, no, so the public comment's over, so it's-
So, can you, sorry. It wasn't a part of the application.
I didn't, I didn't put everything-
No, but, oh, in this piece.
There's current pictures in there.
There are some pictures which he, so this is what, okay, not this one, if you go down, if you go further.
I don't have any more pictures. I don't, I didn't, we didn't, we did a PowerPoint, we didn't put every picture on here.
Okay, okay, so if you look on the, on the, on the package application which is there online and the letter of support which he submitted, he had submitted pictures, a view from his house before and view from his house now.
I've seen those pictures.
And there was no change, there's absolutely no change. And this is not taking away anything from the neighborhood. It's, if at all, adding to it. We spent a ton of money putting this in, we should have taken the permission. There was no change in the grade, absolutely no change in the grade. He is worried about the drain coming out. I reassured him when he told me that. Yes, we will move it when we have the next, you know, phase of, of the concrete work after this is, approval comes through and we have the concrete guys come. They will change the drain if we don't want, because that area, the water table is very high. My house, his house and all the other houses, it's always damp there and I didn't want to add any more water in there. And then, and my house actually, his house grades into my house all through front to back. My neighbor's house drains into my house front to back. My house is actually a drainage point. The next door neighbors, when they built it, they raised the grade. I mean, those things apart, the point is, I do not want to in any way inconvenience anyone. It is not taking-
So I think you've addressed the comments. Is there anything else you'd like to make as a final comment to us?
Yeah, and as far as the neighborhood association goes, they is asking for master plan. And I asked them specifically, what master plan do you want? You know, do you want the size of the faucet in my kitchen or what? He didn't tell me anything. He said, give me master plan, master. I said, this is the landscape plan, this is how the pool is, this is where the equipment is, this is where the equipment is going to be moved. And then he was upset about it.
Okay, I, we get the picture. So thank you for your comments. Any other questions from the board?
Yes. I have a question for the township. This was brought to our attention, which is why we're being asked to approve the existing wall. Is there any other background information? Is there any, is there any other problem we're trying to solve other than the fact that we've got a wall that's too high and we didn't get permission for it?
I don't know of any, this is the first that I've heard other than the letters regarding the, this is the first I've heard of some of these issues.
Okay.
So.
So this was brought to us due to input from the community?
It was brought to us, I think, by one of our inspectors that noticed it in the field.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that it was an inspector?
Right, so the inspector came and he told us that, you know, this wall needs a ZBA. That's when we came and then we stopped the work and we came in, got a permission. And that's kind of put us really almost a month behind and we are racing with weather to get this job completed. It's raised the cost, inconvenience, so many other things. And in no way- And in no way, form, or shape, I'm doing anything wrong or harming anyone. If ever, I'm just trying to add to the beauty and everything to the neighborhood and my property. And there's just no way I'm going to be able to get, if this is not approved, from my kitchen to the pool deck.
I don't think we have enough information.
We don't. I don't know where the stairs are...
Yeah, we can't make a decision on this.
Where his kitchen door is, understand how the stairs are getting down.
There's no real survey, there's no detail, there's no way to look at this and determine exactly what's going on.
In the sense...
So basically, we have a construction project going on without any information being provided to the township, exactly what's going on?
Right.
Okay. So we have a self-created problem.
Not really. It was already, there was stairs existing there, and we just replaced it.
So I think we understand that, yeah, we understand that.
I think there's two parts to this. One is, you're saying, "I needed to replace my stairs." But the second is, you then continue to extend that wall down the line.
The wall is only, it's three feet, and the township allows two feet. I can take it down to two feet if that's the case. If that's at two feet, then...
Saying there's two separate things.
I know. But the thing is, it's just one feet more. So it's one block more than what the township allows.
But that requires variance, that's why you're here.
That's why, so that's the variance. So the one feet is not making any difference, not blocking anyone's view, is not causing, and the cross-section of the wall given, it's just over-engineered. The wall was over-engineered. The depth of the concrete base was deeper than what it required. So it was really over-engineered, and really heavy blocks, which would stand any kind of thing. Very good drainage system, everything was done properly.
Okay, so I think we have the clear picture of the elements that we need to consider here, so thank you for your comments.
Did the wall get longer out towards the lake?
No. The long, no, it did not get longer, no.
Okay, so we can't tell any of these things, and I'm an architect, so I know there isn't enough information here. Now, please let me finish.
Sorry.
Thank you. I don't understand where your stairs are going down. I don't understand where the last wall ended. You know, we'll have to deal with how high the wall is. You know, in some benefits, your stair may cover the height of the wall. We may come to an understanding that we can approve, but we do not have enough information here. And I will further say, if you're moving hot tub equipment around and pool heater things, those all require a variance, and we would rather know what's happening with those to understand all of this, and some dimensions. This isn't to scale. You know, if you want us to find a hardship or understand how you get out of your kitchen, I need to know where that kitchen door is. I don't even understand which direction the stairs are going down on this picture. So, you know, you don't need to answer anything tonight, we need a lot more drawings, probably a property survey, and an explanation of what the stairs are doing. And I guess we can't, we can't make you tell us where the pool equipment is right now, but if we approve something here, and then you come back three months from now and say, "I want to move the pool equipment, and I have a hardship because of what I previously did," we would like to know where everything's going.
Can I answer?
Yes.
Okay. So the pool equipment is going to go, if I could maybe...
Hold on.
Okay, yeah, we shouldn't be tied by pool equipment. We need to understand your stairs.
We need to have, yeah, we need to have a picture, we need to have a picture.
Can I pull a picture up from my phone?
No.
I think this should be tabled.
Yeah, we're gonna need, we're gonna need to table this. I mean, we've gotten feedback from your neighbors, the head of the, I guess, Architectural Control Committee, about the lack of clarity on the scope of this. You're gonna need to talk to the staff about it. There's concern about where the pool equipment is, how your stairs are going down, and all those relate to the variance that was requested tonight. So without context for that, we can't consider it tonight.
Can I, can I show the picture?
No, that's not gonna help. So we've gone around and around on that. We don't need any of your pictures. Now, you're gonna have to come back.
And I have to tell you, one of my concerns was there wasn't a specific dimension, it just said within eight feet. And I, I want a dimension.
There was, in the presentation, there was.
You're done talking?
Yep.
Okay. So let's have a motion. I think we know what motion we need now, let's...
I'll make a motion with regards to the appeal at 6091 Franklin Road for the retaining wall. I move to postpone or table...
Table.
Table, yeah. Table the application as presented today until such a time as you can prevent, present additional information for our consideration.
Support?
Motion and support, any discussion? So I'd just say he's gonna need to talk to the staff about what that is.
Can I ask one last question, if I may?
No, no, we're in the middle of a motion, let us finish the motion.
You'll have to talk to...
All those in favor of the motion to table, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We have a documentation by tomorrow.
Your request is tabled. Please talk to the staff about the additional detail that's gonna be needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's call the next item. Item 137320 Wing Lake Road.
Hi, how are you? I'm seeking approval for putting in a bocce ball...
What is your name?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Name and address?
Larry Jacob. I'm the owner of 7320 Wing Lake. And when I was doing the backyard, I put a bocce ball court in, and an in-ground trampoline and a sports court. So I'm seeking approval on that.
So, you've been here tonight. What do you think your chances are of getting approval for something that's already in? I'm just teasing you, I'm just saying we...
I know you're tired, I'm tired.
There's a pattern here that, you know, Carol addressed it earlier, is, I think you're fairly knowledgeable, because you've come here, you've had other variances, right, at this property?
A lot, yes.
I'm just surprised that we're now talking about all of these things now. These are not small items. So what is your, what is your explanation for that?
Well, the trampoline and the bocce ball court, I would have never thought you needed approval for a game on the ground, I really didn't. The sports courts, a slab of cement, you don't need a slab for a driveway. And the property's so big, I didn't...
Okay. But didn't any of your contractors, or any of the people that you're working with?
I'm the cement contractor for the house, I did the cement work.
So you gotta, you really have to blame yourself twice?
Yeah, I did all the cement work, landscaping.
Okay.
Okay, just assume this. If you want to put anything in your yard, anywhere, you come to the township.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, ask.
I mean, you picked a bad night to come in with this.
Oh, I know, and I'm last almost.
Too many existing structures tonight.
Yeah. All right, did you want to highlight anything? So does the sports court have netting around it, or any...
No, no lighting either, for they're not out there late at night.
Okay, you know, you can only use that during daylight hours?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board? I'm sorry, I interrupted the whole thing here.
And we stayed far from all the property lines.
It looks like a gold, gold, is it a...
What is the netting thing here in this?
That's the trampoline for the kids that don't fly off and get hurt.
That goes around the...
Yeah.
It's like a soft, soft, yeah.
Yeah. Makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, there is some, right. All right, so I'll open it to the public, anyone like to comment on this one item?
Good evening, Herman Eichner, 7221 Holiday Drive. I'm northwest of Mr. Jacob's property, and looking from my property, I can see into his backyard from that direction, I guess, where you see the...
Yeah, so you're back in the cul-de-sac that's...
Yep. Sure. Thank you. Yeah, I'm here so I can see, you know, back into, into his yard. And I see no injustice, I see beauty, I see kids out there playing. They're out there instead of gaming. It's used, it's not noisy. He's had a number of family events out there that we've witnessed, and I fully support it. I think it's good use of the property and adds value to the neighborhood.
Does anyone else who'd like to speak on this item?
Good evening, Vinnie Anton. I live at 7251 Holiday Drive, so I'm right behind Larry's house, connected to it, just like Herman was saying. Beautiful property, no issues. I mean, it's, he's got a huge lot. It's not like, it's in the middle, in the back, it's not like it's close to our property or anybody's. I don't see any issue with it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on this? Okay? So I don't think you really need a rebuttal to that, but I think you kind of understand our perspective on this in terms of, so now you understand what's required, because you know, you seem like you're, you like fun, and you got a lot of fun activities and stuff.
I work, my family enjoys all the fun.
Okay, so, okay, so you want to make sure, I'm just saying, if you want to add anything else, just sort of know what's needed, okay?
I've got nothing left in me, I'm too tired.
If I can say, typically, when we have somebody come in and put these kind of structures in the yard, we require some massive screening going around the property line.
There is. I got three, they asked me to plant 220 bushes, I planted 310.
Okay, I can't see that. Are they, are they evergreens?
Oh, yeah. I put 310 of them in. They're around the whole property, and there's a fence around the whole property.
Because it looks like deciduous trees to me, so that's why I'm asking.
Down there, I could see them.
Because you're supposed to sort of have that screening all the way around, so that your neighbors can't, can't look and say, "Oh, I can see what's going on there."
There are like six-foot bushes around the whole yard.
Are they spread out, or they...
No, they're tight. They're tight, they just got to grow. I mean, 300 of them is just a lot of money to buy them higher. Man, it's a game changer when you're buying 300 of them.
Yeah, well, if any of the, if any neighbor were here with a complaint, we'd be talking about more screening or inspecting the screening that's there, but lacking any complaints.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Are there questions? They're so quiet.
And about a month before we moved in, Chris, Chris Fox, right? Chris asked us to put a swale in, and I, it cost a fortune, I put a swale in from the backyard all the way to the front for all the water would drain.
So I'll say this, so I do, so I live on Wing Lake Road, I walk by this house quite a bit, and when you had the issue with the generator, that was screened the next day. So there is screening around the perimeter. I can't really tell, I know there's stuff back there, you can't really see it that much from Wing Lake Road, there is a bit of a grade change.
Yeah.
I do walk on the other road, because I walk my dog, and it's really more visible from the people behind you than Wing Lake Road. So those people have said it's okay. It is a big piece of property. There is a lot of fun that I see happening there, which is good, so, but I would just say, you know, you're the contractor, you've done, you know, a nice job with it.
Thank you.
I guess I'd just say, you kind of picked a bad night to come here, because you've had, you kind of, there's a pattern happening that's not acceptable. So just don't do it again.
No, I won't.
With that said, I'll make a motion. In regards to the appeal at 7320 Wing Lake Road for the existing in-ground trampoline, bocce ball court, and sports court, I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards, because the size of the accessory structures and the types of accessory structures are compatible, and they are appropriate for the neighborhood with homes this size, and in the community, these types of structures are very popular. With that said, if application, if approved, the motion also includes, application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing accessory structures. I'm gonna say that additional evergreen planting may be required, and I think you may want to walk around and see if there's any gaps. I know that there's a lot there, but I'm not saying you have to put screening, but just to look, to see that if there's any other additional screening may be required. No illumination is permitted on the sports court, and the use of the sport court is limited to daytime hours.
So I have a motion and support, any discussion? Everybody okay with the screening and everything? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. You're a lucky man.
Have a good night.
All right. You must have a wonderful family, they've got a lot of activities there, so.
Hi, I'm Thomas Payne with TW Health Landscaping. On behalf of Gemma Corfield of 1940 South Hammond Lake Drive, she contacted us in the spring to put in a ledge rock retaining wall. And when we discussed the wall with the EGLE, they led us in another direction, and we put in core logs, planting beds, native plant species, and everything that they basically said we needed to do. The thing is that we were approved for the permit with the EGLE. We set up with our subcontractor, and that was about two weeks out, but just about the same time that we expected to be done, that's when I think the actual permit came, they said it would come in a week. So there was a timeline thing, and then, then we found out that we were ignorant, and that we did not have the variance for the setback. Everything's pretty much a net gain visually. It's ecologically, biologically sound, it's a biodegradable core log, that everything's just a net positive. Any questions?
Any elements to the public comment? Does anyone like to comment on this item? Bring it back to the board for discussion or motion. So those wooden stakes will come out eventually?
The stakes will come out eventually, the core log will biodegrade, grass will grow up over it, and like five years' time, it's gonna look like a shoreline, but it's been restored and retained.
And so really, this is replacing like a metal?
Yeah, it's better than metal, it's better than rock, it's the newest.
Kind of a natural...
Exactly.
Okay, seems like a significant advancement in best practice.
Yeah.
So any questions or ready for a motion?
In regards to the appeal, 1940 South Hammond Lake Drive, for the existing core log combined with native plantings, plantings in fill of topsoil, I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty, because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, because it would, this is actually preserving the wetlands, there's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, as this is actually an upgrade, and it's something that needed to be done, and is actually even more eco-friendly for the natural setback. Unique circumstances with the property, again, this is lake frontage, and because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion must include, applications for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing encroachment in the natural feature setback. And I believe that's it.
Support?
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item 15, 4090 Overlaya.
Yeah, that's me.
Okay.
Yeah, hi, Christina Azzi, owner of 4090 Overlay Lane. We want to build an addition to our home, so currently has a two-car garage, I'm looking to build another two-car garage to make a four-car garage. But I will be encroaching, I'm supposed to have 40 feet between the side of my house to the Overlay Court, which is another road, and then there's actually Telegraph after that. So I'll be using about five feet from that 40, so I'm encroaching about five feet. I thought it was 16 feet, but because it's a corner lot, it's 40.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Open this to the public for comment? Anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing, bring it back.
As respect to the property located at 4090 Overlay Lane, I would move to grant the permission request.
You don't need a permission request, it's attached. Sorry.
I was wondering about that, too.
I would move to grant the dimensional variance, because the applicant has demonstrated... I would move to grant the dimensional variance because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. Specifically, it's due to the location of the property. It will not have any... Do any injustice adjoining properties because basically it has two front lots, which is why the variance is required, and it's located adjacent where the garage will go is located adjacent to Telegraph, so it won't have any impact on anyone. And it's not self-created. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the garage. All permits must be obtained prior to construction. A single-family affidavit is required to be submitted to the township.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling the next item. Item 16, 6543 Castle.
Hi, good evening. I'm Karen Amick. I own 6543 Castle Drive. This is a photo of 6543 Castle Drive in the 1880s. This is a historical home that was owned by Linda Solomon for many years. She sold it to me because she knew I would take care of the home and be a good steward. I purchased a windmill for the property. The property being a former blacksmithing barn and thought a windmill would be quite appropriate for that setting. And so I'm seeking the board's approval to put up a windmill in the front. And I know that sometimes items go in the back. My backyard is about 50 feet maybe. I think it's 30 to 50 feet, so not a lot of room in the back. I have a 1.1 acre lot. Most of my property is to the side and the front. The placement of the windmill is actually going to be obscure to the neighbors across the street. So if you look to the left side of the house where all of the trees are, there's pine trees and you can see the large tree there. Behind it, you see my neighbor's home. It's a red home. That was actually all one lot at one point in time. It was all one farm in Bloomfield Township. And that neighbor is absolutely envious of my windmill and can't wait for me to put it up. But where those trees are, it's going to be completely obscure from the homeowner across the street that's kitty-corner to me and in front of me. And so that is basically the plan. I think the only piece of information the board didn't have was the north and south view. I do have those photos. If you're interested in looking at those, I apologize that they're not a part of the presentation tonight, but that... Oh! Well, that's... But that's not really the view to the south. That is really... If you see the garage, it looks like a barn. That's actually the garage, the gray. And the house... Can you go back a photo or two?
I can go to the aerial if you want to point it out in the aerial.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. If you want to use the pointer to show where the garage is and where it is at.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Well, how does this work though?
You have to hold the button down.
Which one?
There's a silver button on the side you have to hold down, that button?
Oh, I see. Okay. I do this better with my cat at home. So 6543... So this is a house right here and the garage is right here. I'm looking at put the windmill right here. So these are like a conglomerate of trees, pine trees. I don't really know all the species of trees that are there, but it's completely blocking the view of this neighbor. And this neighbor will not be able to see it because it'll be around the corner of the trees. You will see it coming north on Castle Drive when you get to the top of the hill. So probably about 75 feet right here is where you might see the windmill. You cannot see it at all coming this direction, coming from Maple Road heading south.
Even in the winter?
Say it one more time.
Even in the winter? Evergreen? Are they evergreen?
Well, they're pine trees, so I believe they do keep their needles. Yeah. But it's a great question. In all fairness, there will be some trees that are going to lose their leaves, yes. And I have to say it was more of a act of nature in terms of that area.
I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item?
My name is David Miles. I live at 6514 Castle Drive. And you have, I think, already received a petition from numerous property owners that are opposed to this windmill. This is a like 40-foot tall windmill with about a 10-foot blade and we are all opposed to it. And I think it'd be a great place in the middle of Nebraska, but not in Bloomfield Township. Thank you.
So excuse me. So can you... So from your house, are the trees that would be between your house and the proposed location, are those evergreen trees or are the leaves coming?
There's both evergreens and trees that have leaves on them.
So in the winter, can you see?
Yeah, you can see it.
Okay.
But the thing is 40 feet tall.
We understand that, yeah. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
So I'm going to assume the gentleman in the back... No one else wants to comment? Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Do you want to respond to the...
The windmill is green. I mean, it blends in with the trees. It really is quite obscure. I mean, I can try and give a better perspective on it. In terms of other neighbors' disapproval, I know nothing of that. I know Jim and Lori next to me, again, are completely envious of the windmill and hopeful that they can watch me put it up. I'm having a professional put it up. And it's completely appropriate to the house. It's not necessarily to be viewed necessarily as this is a Bloomfield Township residence. This is a historical home that was a blacksmithing barn and farm originally. And so... And windmill is Americana. This is an Americana home. This absolutely goes with the home. And so I would absolutely love to display it as a part of a whole piece of what this home is about. So, you know, that's... Those are my thoughts on it. I'm sorry to hear. I have not heard from this neighbor at all that they have any concerns, so this is the first I'm hearing.
Yeah, we receive quite a few...
Is there like a way that I would have been notified of that or no? I would not have known of any concerns.
Yeah, to talk to your neighbors before coming here.
Just knock... Well, I can't knock on his door. He's told me that I cannot knock on his door, so that would not be an available option to me.
Right, so that might be...
Not a good idea.
Part of the problem. I'll just say that the height of this is higher than anything that we've typically approved in our standards. It might... You're saying it's a historical house and it goes to this historical... That's not part of the criteria that we have. We have to assess the impact on the neighborhood, you know, the feedback and compatibility. So the compatibility issue is difficult for us and then the impact on the neighborhood. Because it's...
So you're seeing the compat... I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. I'm a chairperson. So you're seeing the compatibility of the house is not going with the windmill? Is that correct?
I'm just saying, your point was that it's a historic house and it really is compatible with the historic house and that's not how we assess it. You're saying, you know, because it's a blacksmith and a historical house, you'd really like to have it there as part of the history and something you feel very strongly about because of the prior owner and your obvious, you know, passion for that. So that's not the same way we look at it.
I guess I would have to understand better the viewpoint of the board then on when you say like an item is appropriate to a property, how does... I mean, to me, a windmill is a barn item, so this is a farm-barn-looking historical home. I guess I just don't understand how that accessory would not go together.
It goes together with the home, but we're talking about with the neighborhood.
Neighborhood.
It's with the neighborhood. Compatible with the neighborhood.
Well, the home is not compatible with the neighborhood at all because it is a unique home. It is actually a historical home that was original to the area. The home's building around it, but this home, if you look at it in general, would not be a typical...
But what's before us today is the windmill.
Bloomfield Township home.
What's before us today is the windmill.
You're trying to get it removed, the house.
Yeah. We're just...
Okay.
Are there other sizes of this windmill?
And I questioned that. I thought, well, maybe I can cut it down, but then it's an antique windmill. You know, do I want to do that to a piece of history? You know? I mean, I can. I just didn't necessarily want to destroy a piece of history that is authentic at this point in time.
So this one you found is antique.
Yeah.
Also, it sort of looks silver, not green.
It is green. I have better pictures.
I'll just say, I don't... It would be very hard for us to approve this. You're going to have to go with something smaller. So I think you could get a windmill. I don't know if there's a way to sort of trade this one for a smaller one or look around, but I don't... At least for me personally, I would not be able to approve this because of the...
The height?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the board's time tonight. Thank you.
Well, we haven't voted yet.
That's okay. I already know your vote. Thank you. I'm sorry. I have two young kids to get to and a nine-year-old mother, so I just...
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
So, yeah, why don't we make the motion? Or is there any?
Yeah, let me just find the language here. Oh, my gosh. Is it just a permission? No, it's a dimensional variance.
You can just do the permission, though. Yeah, because we deny that.
And those are kind of the standards I was trying to explain to her.
All right. In regards to the appeal at 6543 Castle Drive, I make a motion to deny the permission request at that address for the accessory structure in that the applicant did not demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards due to really the size of the accessory structure. The 40-foot height is not compatible with adjoining properties. The location of the structure in the front yard is a hindrance to use of adjacent properties and will not be harmonious to the neighborhood.
Support.
I have motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The request is denied. So calling the next item. Item 17, 4099 Telegraph. Thank you for your patience.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Bob Bonjourno with Allied Signs located at...
Address is 33650...
So just think, though, we sit and do this every month, so you're just here for one?
Well, I'm just happy that the Tigers aren't playing tonight, to be honest.
Yeah, that would... I would be... There would be someone else sitting here if the Tigers are playing, so.
The address is 33650 Gifto's Drive, Clinton Township. I'm here on behalf of Kroger located at...
4099.
4099 Telegraph. We're requesting a variance for some signage. We're requesting two variances. One for a little bit of extra square footage for a wall sign and an additional wall sign, the pickup sign. Now, I'd like to make a point that the pickup sign, it may be a sign, but it's also... Could be classified as informational directional sign, being that that's where the consumers go to pick up the online orders. We're asking for a little bit more square footage based upon that for visibility from the parking lot for people to see where the pickup section of the store is where they can go. It is a very busy and big shopping center and a lot of the consumers are older in their eyesight, ain't quite what it used to be. So like, they say bigger is better. So we like to have a little bit of additional square footage on the allowable square footage.
Not with windmills, though.
Not with windmill. I never even thought of a windmill in the backyard, but...
Front yard.
Oh, front yard. Front yard, oh, okay, well, all right. But we are asking for just slightly more square footage, only 42 square feet more than the ordinance allows. And a second wall sign, which is informational directional signage. It could be classified that way.
Okay. We understand your perspective. Any questions on the board? Open this to the public for comment? Anyone like to comment? Close it and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be willing to make a motion.
Sure.
In regard to the appeal at 4099 Telegraph Road for the dimensional variance on the signage, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome given the fact that we're trying to inform the public. We are dealing with an aged public and we've got specific areas that we can work with. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors since they are also retail establishments. There are unique circumstances with the property, given the current location and the availability for space for the signage, and it's not self-created for the same reason. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you. Have good evening.
Seems like the white letters will be more visible, too, than the old rimmed sign.
That signage needs help anyway, so it's great. Mr. Chairman, I just want to advise you and the board that one of the presenters this evening is my next-door neighbor and friend, Steve Mazur. We've known each other for years. That being said, I think I can still fulfill my duties without prejudice.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for disclosing that. I think we're good.
Be brief. Be brief. Yeah, I'm looking at all the people.
Or do you want to build it first and then come back?
We can say we have not built anything. Nothing has been built.
That's a good start.
Great start.
Am I good to go?
You're good to go.
Okay, thank you very much. Dennis Cowan from Plunkett Cooney representing the applicants for the zoning variances. And I want to introduce our team, Steve Mazur and Jay Parks on behalf of the owners of the tennis club and proposed fieldhouse property and also our architect of record Brandon Kritzman of Detroit Architectural Group. You have saved the best for last. Is that a good start?
Brilliant.
So we're much different than anything else you've seen this evening. This is a once-in-a-lifetime project. This will create the premier, we believe, in the state and the Midwest all-purpose training facility, both internationally and nationally, but serving township residents as well as others in the broader community. Just to give you a brief overview of the project, so we have some context to this and you see the site plan. Currently existing Building C is the iconic Detroit skating club, which I want to mention is this year celebrating its 75th anniversary of being involved in U.S. skating. And they also are one of only 11 facilities in the world that are a center of excellence as designated by the International Skating Union, which is their governing body. And so they are just having two small additions in blue. Those don't require any variances. Building B is the existing tennis club. There will be one addition. Well, it's actually going to be separate, but on the western edge you see in kind of a pinkish fuchsia color. That will be dormitories. The one thing that will serve persons traveling from around the world and in the USA to train at the skating facility. There's 36 units in that. The one deficiency that the skating club was told by the ISU that they had was they didn't have within walking distance living quarters for people who were training. So this will remedy that. The centerpiece of tonight's discussion and of the new construction will be Building A, and that is the proposed fieldhouse. This will have an Olympic-sized soccer field. As well as you can see in the northwest or northeast corner of the building will be a baseball diamond. This will be all synthetic turf. It will not have an inflatable roof. It will have a solid roof. It meets all of the township designations and requirements for this type of facility. So that is a little bit of the overview and the context. We're going to visit... I call this the grand tour. We will visit all township boards. We have... We'll have four visits. You're number three. We have received a unanimous approval by both the Design Review Board and by the Planning Commission, and that was without any opposition but public support. So I think in part that support has come from the fact that the township's master plan acknowledges that it doesn't have as many recreational facilities by way of public parks. But it does in the master plan, under Community Services and Facilities section, talk about private recreational facilities and encourage those, and states, because the facilities provide valuable recreational opportunities that currently cannot be offered by the township due in part to land availability, use of these public facilities should be encouraged. And I think the master plan would have said additional development would be encouraged because that only makes sense. And there is availability here. Currently, the property that Building A sits on is part of a parking lot associated with the ice arena, and there's two existing aging industrial buildings that will be obviously replaced. So add to the variances themselves... And by the way, I should say one more thing. This project has been years in the making. What we're bringing to you is almost a decade of talking and planning. Even though each facility will be privately owned, there is significant coordination between the fieldhouse facility in particular and the ice arena, as well as you can see providing the dormitories for the ice arena personnel who are going to be training there. So in terms of the variances, I put them into two buckets. The first bucket is existing conditions. So the two variances associated, the setbacks for parking lot and front yard on the tennis club, those are existing conditions. We're not changing that row of parking. You'll see Denison Court, and if you've visited the property, it's in pretty bad shape. So that is totally going to be ripped up. We had to enter to an extensive agreement with the road commission. The road's been abandoned and is actually now a private road, but the road commission retained the stormwater drainage system, and that's going to totally be redone underneath to provide detention underneath and also new stormwater drainage pipes will be put in place. And they also have to be moved because currently, if we built it today, they'd be a portion of those stormwater pipes, the Building A would be over. So those are existing conditions. The primary factor of several of the variances is because of the size of the building. Despite the size of the building, the fire marshal and the fire department has signed off on all the access around the building, and that's adequate. And that's very important because that's a life safety issue. So given the size of having the need for an Olympic-sized field so that we can qualify for the various teams that want to be able to practice and play and train there, that was very important. And also, we wanted to maximize the parking, and that's really a safety issue. So as much parking as possible could be associated with the various buildings. However, the parking is shared. There are 485 parking spaces on site. And as you can imagine, sometimes there's competitions at the ice arena which draw quite a number of people. We will not have any spectators unless they want to stand because we don't have any stands. Those were eliminated, as well as a lobbying area. We tried to cut the building down to the absolute bare minimum, and as you can see from the building footprint of Building A, really the field... It's the field, soccer field and the baseball diamond, and that's it. There's really not a lot of space. There's a little store inside of Building A. And we also are going to use the baseball diamond in that area as a warm-up area for soccer teams that would be playing the next game, especially in the wintertime, they have to warm up a little bit and whatnot. So we believe on, as I stated in my letter to you and the application, that we meet the standards that you have to make determinations on. This is a permitted purpose. It's a special land use within the Research Park District. We believe it's fair to all the owners of not only the immediate properties but adjacent properties. This is really isolated, and it's really its own campus, and it will be a recreational campus, so to speak. And because of that, the proximity of three buildings to one another, we think this is unique circumstances that don't exist anywhere else in the township, and these are not self-created variances. We have not built the thing. We are asking for permission, not for forgiveness.
Yes.
So that being said, we welcome any questions. We have the entire team to answer any of the questions, and we appreciate... Would appreciate and respectfully request your approval of variances.
Does anybody have any questions? So I don't want to drag this out and all, but this really is a remarkable project. You know, I'm... You know, I watched the Olympics and stuff, and you'd hear, you know, there'd be people from the Olympics from the Detroit Skating Club or... And I was just going to ask you, because I was down at Belle Isle, and I told the staff there, the Detroit Skating Club, you know, has Detroit in its name, and I believe Detroit Skating Club originated on Belle Isle. There's a small pond, and there's actually... I saw a plaque there where you saw people were actually, you know, skating outside. And so that was it, and then it moved out here and whatever the time. Okay, so I was right on that. So there really is a rich, you know, history of this, and I guess I didn't realize it was going to have so, you know, soccer in it, baseball. So this is just a real... As you said, it's a transformational project.
It is.
So thanks to all of you for your hard work on it. I'm sure this took a lot of time, thought, blood, sweat and tears.
I wish Mr. Dunagan, who's the executive director, could have been here. He is... Was an athlete that trained there and was in the Olympics.
The staff also mentioned that he gave quite a...
And he gave an impassioned, amazing discussion of what this does for athletes, the training facilities, and then the ability to go, you know, from this jumping-off point to go around the world. He said he saw the world, and so have many other people, including residents here in Bloomfield Township. And I think, Jay, you mentioned, we've had particularly female athletes in lacrosse go on training at the tennis facility right now because that's all they can use, go on to be All-Americans. Was it at Yale or...
I was skating with Northwestern.
Northwestern, yes.
He's tied Player of the Year in the NCAA, has won national championships, and has scored more bullies in lacrosse than any human being.
Yeah. Right here from Bloomfield Township.
Creed in the building.
So we want to produce more champions and have Bloomfield Township compete with the world. How's that?
Sure. We're being abbreviated.
Yeah. So I'll open this to the public. Anyone here like to comment on this item? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for a motion.
In regards to the appeal at 764 through 888 Denison Court, four laundry list of things. Should I list them all or do we?
No. As identified.
Okay, as... Thank you. As identified, I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because with all of these variances, it would prevent reasonable use of the property for what it was intended. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because all of these variances that are going to be put in place are actually going to make the facility a lot safer, a lot friendlier for the neighborhood in the community. Unique circumstances with the property, there's existing limitations based on the property that it's on, and so therefore they do need the variances. And because of that, it is not self-created. With that said, if approved, the motion includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support. So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to acknowledge, in addition to our thanks, that the staff at the Planning Department, Patty Volker and Andrew, they have been tremendous. They've stuck with us over the years. They've explained to us why we needed certain things done, and they've really done a fantastic job.
We love them, too.
We're getting to the finish line. Thank you. We're three-quarters of the way there. And by the way, I do this in a lot of places. You had the variety tonight. You had a little bit of everything. By the way, I do have tickets for Thursday night, and I will not be there because I have to be at the Royal Oak Zoning Board of Appeals.
Oh, man! No, no!
But I'm going tomorrow.
Can't you get appendicitis or something?
He already had his appendicitis.
With my luck, my client will be watching the game and see me in my seat. They know where I sit.
Good point. A risk you can't take.
This is an amazing contribution to our community. I mean, this really embodies what our community is all about, which is excellence. Not opulence, but excellence. And this is something that's going to be a testament to what this community and the people in it and its business leaders are really all about, and I think it's fantastic. I wish all the best.
I just want to tell you, Mr. Mazur has had the vision for years, and he has kept this going with all the moving parts and all the groups involved.[1769.53]